Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Due to COVID-19 Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform, and stream on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have been registered in advance will be able to make their presentation to the committee using WebEx Webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch it on YouTube. So my name is Nazila Acharo-D West. I'm chairing this session. Panel members with me are Ms. Sankar, Mr. Paul Kidd, and Ron Hunt. City staff moderating the platform are Simon Lam, the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Alex Chu, Sam Mozaiani, and Arvin Bridyard. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator. And one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you call on to speak. Those participants by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist control during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga of Credit, the Anishnaaba, the Chipewa, the Hadnashui, and the Wandaht people. And it's now home to many diverse First Nation, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto covered Part Treaty 13 with the Mississauga of Credits. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of Panel Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considered application for variances for the provincial zoning that applies to the property, permission to extend it or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new laws. Receiving a copy of the decision of the committee. Anyone attending today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, TLAB, will be sending notifications and appeal update by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, TLAB, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal, OLT. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November 28, 2022, only the applicant, the municipality, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, special person, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decision of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Hearing procedures. I will call each item in order listed on the agenda. Making your submissions. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matter outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revision to proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the applications are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the applications will be invited to speak. Committee member may also ask question of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agents has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. I would like to ask city staff and the panel member if there is any declaration of interest, any conflict of interest? None to declare? And Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral for this afternoon's session?
I have not.
You're not. And Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed?
There are no files to be closed.
Okay, perfect. So then we proceed with the hearing. So the first item on the afternoon session is item number 2079 Alexandra Boulevard. And the agent is Jay Smith. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Jay Smith, I'm the agent for the application. My address is 2814 Hollington Crescent.
Thank you. So there is no one registered to speak for this application? Panel members, do you need any presentation? No? So do you have anything to add? Like for our panel members?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
No? Okay, thank you. So panel member, if there is no other question? Yes? Mr. Hunt?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that there is no one to speak to this issue in opposition and that there are no department comments or concerns, I would move that this be approved without condition.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Hunt. Anyone second it? Seconded by Mr. Kidd. All in favor? Thank you. So this application unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So item 21. The address is 217 Leighton Boulevard. And the agent registered is Drew Laslow. Good afternoon.
I'm not sure if you can hear me. I'm Drew Laslow, agent for the owner. My address is 193 Row Avenue.
Yes, we can hear you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So there is nobody else registered to speak to this application? Do you have any comment?
No, I believe the application is pretty straightforward.
Perfect, thank you. Panel member, do you have any question, comment for this applicant? No question, comment? If no comment, would you please put forward a motion? Yes, Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel this is a requested variance is minor in nature and meets the four tests. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application without condition.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Kidd to approve this application with no condition. Anyone second it? Yes, it's seconded by Mr. Hunt. All in favor? Thank you very much. Your application unanimously approved with no condition.
Thank you very much.
Now we are items 22nd. The address is number 10 Abbotsford Road. The agent is Thomas Marzotto. Good afternoon.
Thomas Marzotto. I'm the agent and architect for the application. The proposal is concerning the construction of a new.
Excuse me, sorry for interrupting you. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Thomas Marzotto. And the address is 20 Berkeley Road, Cambridge, Ontario.
Perfect, thank you very much. There are some area resident who would like to talk. Would you please provide us a brief presentation?
Yes, so we're proposing to build a new home. It's considered three floors because the basement level is closest to grade. And in the staff report, they do mention that the exterior has the appearance of a two-story dwelling. And I'm not concerned about the height any longer since the proposal was circulated in our neighborhood. We've made some major changes. Namely, we reduced the building height from 10.68 meters to 10 meters.
Sorry for interrupting you again. Would you please go by the number of the variance and the changes that you're providing? So variance number one, this is the new change. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go through the requested variances that was circulated. Number one, the minimum required side yard is 1.8 meters. We're proposing 1.22 meters. So we're requesting relief from that. Number two, the exterior stairs at the front, what we've done is we revised the drawings to comply. So number two will be eliminated. The number three, four, and five are pertaining to platforms, exterior platforms. There's one platform at the front and two at the rear. We're going to reduce the areas of each one to four square meters. So that number five will be eliminated. Number six, permitted number of stories is two. The building is considered three-story due to the bylaw. It states that the floor closest to grade is the first story. The maximum height, number seven, we eliminated that. We reduced the height from 10.6 meters to 10 meters. Number eight, we also reduced, but not eliminated, the height of the sidewalls.
Excuse me, sorry. Would you please repeat? Sorry, by the number of the variance, variance number one, this is the modification. So we understand that variance number one, you keep it. Variance number two and three, you will eliminate it. Then what about variance number three? Oh, three, you eliminated. Variance number four?
Yeah, that's eliminated. And number five eliminated.
And the five is eliminated? Yes?
Yeah. Number six stays. That's the number of stories. So we have three stories. Number seven, the permitted height is 10 meters. And then we will comply with that.
So it means eliminated. Variance number seven will be eliminated? Okay.
Yeah.
Variance number eight?
We reduced the height of the sidewalls from 8.6 meters to 7.5 meters.
7.5, thank you.
Yeah. Number nine, variance remains. That's the minimum, sorry, the maximum building length. So that stays at 17.7 meters. The maximum, number 10, the maximum lot coverage is 30%. And we are now complying with that. The original proposal was circulated to the neighborhood at a coverage of 32.8%. So now we comply. So number 10 is eliminated.
Number 10 eliminated? Yes?
Yes.
What about number 11?
Number 11 is the front yard landscaping. We will comply for that. So that's eliminated also.
That's eliminated. So would you please repeat about variance number nine? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Number nine, vehicles with building length?
Yes.
So the proposed building length is 17.87 meters.
Okay, thank you. So you won't change it, this one? Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, please proceed.
Yeah, so that's basically the proposal.
Okay, panel member, do you have any question or comment? No question? So if, okay. So Mr. Secretary Treasurer?
I just wanted to confirm. You said variance eight was 7.5. So is he eliminating that one?
Well, that's the height of the walls. No, we still have, we'll be above what's permitted. So we're 8.6 meters. What's maximum, 7.5 meters allowed? So basically, be one meter higher than what's allowed.
So the new number you propose is 7.5 meter. Would you please repeat the variance number eight?
No, that's what is permitted. That's the maximum height, 7.5 meters. So we're going to be higher. We're going to be at 8.6 meters.
Okay, so you will keep it as is?
Yeah.
Okay. So in order to just, so let me just. So I will just, based on my notes, so variance number two eliminated, variance number three eliminated, variance number four eliminated, variance number five eliminated, variance number seven eliminated, variance number eight remain as is, variance number 10 eliminated, and variance number 11 eliminated. Is that correct?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Perfect, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any question? Did you have a chance to write all the changes? Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to clarify variance number eight. I thought I heard him say that he was modifying that from 8.6 meters to 7.5.
That's what I heard.
No, we're going to be at 8.6 meters. The proposed size will be 8.6 meters.
Okay.
That's the variance that we're asking for.
Okay. Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at the staff report, May 18. And they're saying in the recommendations section that they're asking you to change variance number eight from the 8.60 meters to 7.91 meters. Are you aware of that?
No, no, I'm not aware of that. But that's, we can follow that up.
Then if you want to modify variance number eight, would you please, for our record, like say variance number eight, and what is the new number that you want to propose?
Yes, so the new building height of the sidewalls will be 7.91 meters.
Perfect, thank you very much. So any question, comment, panel members? No, if there is no question, comment? Yes, Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll put through a motion, please. I think that this.
Madam Chair, we have members of the public registered to speak.
Okay, thank you very much for reminding me. Yes, so sorry, we'll come back to you. So we have, yeah, it's on second page. We have three area resident who registered to speak in this application. The first person is Connor Fitzpatrick. Good afternoon. Connor J. Fitzpatrick.
Connor, you've been unmuted?
Sorry, can you hear me? Sorry, I apologize.
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for our record.
First name Connor, last name Fitzpatrick. Address 135 Churchill Avenue, North York.
Sorry, 105 Churchill Avenue.
13, excuse me, Madam Chair, 135 Churchill Avenue.
135 Churchill Avenue. Thank you very much. Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. So I just wanted to quickly say that I'm a neighbor who, this new construction, it backs onto my backyard. So I just wanted to focus quickly on just three points, man. Just for yourself and members of the committee. I wanted to focus, number one, there have been a few other submissions from other neighbors on the street itself that I saw on the website. So I'm just echoing a few of those comments. For number nine, with respect to that requested variance, I would like it to be kept at the maximum building length. And I also just wanted to raise the point in terms of the context of a minimum or a minimum variance or a minimal variance, the proposed footprint of the house being constructed.
Hello? Sorry, we can't hear you now.
So I just wanted to raise that and to say that I just don't quite understand how that can be construed as a minor variance if the footprints of the home is being doubled. And I just wanted to raise that as a quick issue. Secondly, when I looked at the plans, because this is essentially backing onto my backyard, I look at the rear, west rear elevation in the plans. The back of the property is almost entirely windows, including the platforms. I appreciate the fact that the platforms have been reduced in size, which I appreciate. But if you look at the back of the structure, seeing that it'll be, the property itself will be twice the size, that'll grossly cut sunlight and privacy in my backyard, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
What I wanted to propose was basically a shorter structure.
Okay.
For the loss of privacy. So whether that be trees, trees put in the rear along the fence line or something along those lines, I wanted some mitigation measures just to deal with that loss of privacy if the structure itself was not going to be shorter. And I also just wanted to know about the trees in the rear yard, which appear on the landscape plan. I just wanted to make sure that those large and quite nice majestic trees are not being touched as part of this construction. So that's just my commentary.
Thank you very much. So later, we will ask the agent to explain and address those issues. Thank you. So the next person who have been registered is Wayne Parker. Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, Wayne Parker is not currently on the call. But we have the next, I believe we have the next member of the public, which is Linda Laffrey.
Good afternoon, Linda Laffrey or Rana Laffrey? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Actually, Wayne Parker is using our computer. This is Linda Laffrey at number 6 Abbotsford Road.
Yes, would you please? Okay, would you please state your name and address?
So is it all right if Wayne Parker speaks?
Yes.
Wayne Parker, number 8 Abbotsford Road.
Good afternoon.
I do, regarding the variances, number one, the side yard setback being reduced from 1.8 meters to 1.2 meters. Our home was built in 1947 and is only 11 inches or point.
Sorry, you disconnected. Your question is regarding variance number one, which the proposed side yard setbacks is 1.22?
Hello, yes?
Please proceed.
Okay, I'm concerned with the request to reduce the setback from 1.8. We're already very close to the line. I love you. To reduce the setback by the 0.6 meters is going to mean that between the two homes, there will be virtually no space allowance at all. It would be about 79 inches between the two homes. And if we allowed it, a requested variance, it will reduce that to 67 inches, which is really very, very close for such a large building.
Yes?
I would also feel the concern that was. I echo the address by the gentleman that spoke ahead of me, which is really disproportionate to the rest of the street. The adjoining homes are only 28 feet or 8.6 meters deep. The adjoining homes are only 28 feet or 8.6 meters deep. And this proposal is acceptable, it would seem to us. I think that probably represents my...
Thank you very much.
Do you have any question?
I will ask panel members. Panel members, do you have any question from this neighbor, area resident? No? No, we don't have any question at this stage. Thank you very much for your comment. So the next person will be Linda Laffery. Good afternoon.
Yes, Linda, good afternoon. I live at six, sorry, yeah. Two doors down from the new building. With all of the variances that have been basically removed from the agenda, I only... One, the side yard setback. We're in support...
Sorry, we can't hear you. Your question is regarding variance number one, which is the side yard setback.
It's going to be so close as to be almost... We're fine, yes. Number one, that variance? Can you hear me okay?
We can't hear you clearly.
Linda, you appear to be having some connection issues. I'm going to give you a call at the number that you've registered with, and I'll put you on speakerphone, and you'll be able to express your thoughts through the phone.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, I'll be calling you momentarily.
Okay. Disappeared, like the connection.
Hi, this is the committee adjustment. Is Linda there? Hi, Linda, can you please mute the other? If you have the call open on the computer, can you please mute the call? Because there's an echo. Okay, now you are on speakerphone. If you could please repeat what your statement is? Okay, now you're on speakerphone. If you could please repeat what you were stating before?
Okay, sorry about that. Variance number one, what I originally stated was that most of the variance is no longer an issue. I'll just address the few that are left. Variance number one, the side yard setback, I just want to say that we're very in support of our neighbors' concern as to this closeness because of the very short or narrow distance between the current house and the new build. So it definitely would overpower and leave hardly any room between the two homes. So that's the first concern. The variance, variance number six, as far as I'm concerned, looking at it, I understand the concept of a raised basement, but if this is classified as a three-story house, which I believe it is, then the variance definitely is not minor. It seems that the third floor addition takes up approximately 1,600 square feet or 152 point something square meters, which is really huge. It's a third of the building being up on another floor. So Connor, I think, was indicating that's a big problem again as well, and it is with us. And the aspect of the variances for that third floor impacts the whole project, and I think very negatively. As far as the variance, I think, was number nine. Was it number eight? I think number eight was still in, yes, number eight was still in play. Again, that seems a bit excessive. But the staff requirement has made it a bit shorter, so if that goes true, it's better than it was supposed to be. And number nine, bylaw regarding the depth, we'd like to see this kept with no variance at all allowed because, again, it's dramatically encroaching backwards and overlooking with those extra balconies and such all of our yards. And definitely, there's a privacy concern because the the height of the building and what the platforms or balconies instituted, they're going to definitely lose a lot of privacy at both of our ends. That's really all the statement I have at this point, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to invite the agent to answer the concern, to address the concern of the neighbors. Thomas Marsotto?
Hello, yeah, hello?
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can clear...
Okay, so I'll go through the concerns of the neighbors. The number one is variance is the proposed side yard setback. 1.2 meters, I think, was generous in terms of side yards being proposed in the city of Toronto. And quite a number of homes go down to 0.9 meters. So I don't see that an issue, especially with the neighbor on the south side who has a house built 11 inches from our property line. I don't think we should be penalized because that house was built so close to the lot line. And at the same time, four feet width of a setback is generous in terms of accessing the back of the lot. In terms of privacy, the rear, again, there's three major trees at the back. Even though the length of the house is over what's allowed, I would like to point out that that includes, the length includes the breakfast no cat, the rear. So actually, the main wall is approximately 15.4 meters, which is well below the maximum allowed length. So I'd like to point that out. Now, in terms of the massing in the third floor, the staff report, they consider it visually as a two-story home. And I'd like to emphasize that we'll maintain the maximum height allowable for the building. So I don't see that as a major issue in terms of impacting the neighborhood since we're maintaining the height. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Panel member, any question, comment? If not, any motion? Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I hope I get the changes correct in this motion. I'm going to move a motion to approve subject to the following revisions and changes to the application. Firstly, the proposed stair width, variance two is eliminated. Variance three, second-story front platform is eliminated. Variance four, second-story rear platform is eliminated. Variance five, the third-story platform is eliminated. Variance seven, the proposed building height, is eliminated. Variance eleven, the front yard soft landscape is eliminated. And there's a modification to variance eight, which is the height of the side exterior walls from 8.6 meters to 7.91 meters. And variance ten, lot average, FSI, is reduced from 32.8 to 30%, which effectively eliminates that variance. And I believe there are no other issues, so that is my motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt to...
Excuse me, Madam Chair, could I just interrupt for a second? Mr. Hunt, there was a, in the planning report, there was a planning staff request, a condition, a project being tied to plans. Would you consider including that as well?
Yes, for sure. Okay.
So we have a motion for Mr. Hunt and a friendly amendment by Mr. Kidd. And so you will second it too? Second it?
Can I just verify what that condition is in the staff report?
Yeah, I'll read that in. It's in the comments section of the planning report. It's not in the recommendation, but it says, "Staff recommend that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the front elevation drawings submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, date stamped May 15, 2023, and attached as attachment one to this report."
It's there, the second paragraph, first paragraph at the end of it. So would you please put...
I agree with that.
Okay, would you please put that report on screen so that it will be clear? So it's clear, so we have a motion from Mr. Hunt.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kidd, all in favor? Yes, thank you very much. So this application unanimously approved with those conditions and modifications.
Yes, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is item 23, address 443 Old Orchard. And the agent is Jonathan Benkovsky. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, good afternoon, committee.
Good afternoon. Would you please state your name and address for our record?
Yes, Jonathan Menkowsky, 301 Kiwatin Avenue.
Thank you. So we have another person, one area resident registered to speak to this application. So would you please provide us a brief presentation?
Yes, if we go to the support material I filed and bring that up on the screen.
Staff are currently pulling up the supporting material.
Thank you. So what I've done is I've provided a couple of photos as well as an aerial map to kind of show the character of this block of Old Orchard here. Yeah, no, if we go back to the second map, what we see from the second map there is just located to the east of the subject property. Starts to, what we also notice there is there's a very inconsistent rear wall line in terms of building length as well as building depths. Along this block itself, there's really only two dwellings that have not been developed. Really, this one and the adjacent dwelling to the west, who I believe has a couple of concerns with the proposal. In terms of that, the rest of the block essentially on the south side has been redeveloped with the existing bungalows being removed. But the property here we see is proposed to be developed with a two-story dwelling. If we go to the next slide, please. One of the variances I'd like to briefly address is really just the character of the neighborhood, how it addresses the finished floor height. Most dwellings actually on this street, both on the south and the north, actually have reverse slope garages. So what that actually creates is that pushes the dwelling up in terms of that finished first floor height. So the introduction of the variance requests we have above the 1.2 meters would be in keeping with what is within this neighborhood, which, again, predominantly has reverse slope garages. And we can see from the pictures here, the number of steps, they would actually be higher than what we are proposing. But that definitely is part of the character of this neighborhood as a whole. Continuing on, I've also given you a front and rear elevation. If we could just kind of go through these, we just see a little bit of a pattern there, again, a reverse slope garages and elevated pushed-up first floors. The only height request we have is for the front and the rear main walls. But taking the front as well as the rear here, the only portion that we're requesting the increase of is the green portion that is for the windows located at the front. And if we go to the rear, we'll see the similar case at the rear. Again, that's the only portion that is about 7.5 meters of wall height. The rest of the dwelling conforms with the entire height of the zoning bylaw. In terms of going back to the deck projection, in this case, you know, in my opinion, the deck projection being three meters isn't an issue. We've spoken with planning. Planning had no concerns with the proposal at all. Again, keeping in mind that this is a definite block that has gone through some significant regeneration, with dwellings really mirroring what you see here as what is being proposed with, again, with the predominance of them actually being reverse slope garages. And I guess I'll wait to hear from the neighbor before I address the concerns of the neighbor.
Thank you very much. So the next area resident who registered to speak is Michio Sanho and Akari Sanho. Good afternoon.
Good morning, madam. My name is Akari Sanho. I'm the daughter of Michio Sanho, the owner of 447 Old Orchard Grove. My mother's name is spelt M.I.C.H.I.Y.O., last name Sanho, S.A.N.O.
Yes, thank you very much. So please proceed, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, madam. My first comment is advise the committee that we have not received any outreach from the applicant except to receive a notice of hearing. So my mother's main concern is basically twofold. One is about losing the sunlight through her east-facing window and also due to the lack of privacy. So the issues, the variances at issue are basically number one and number six. So number one is pertaining to the rear deck projection. The applicant seeks 3.5 meters, whereas 2.5 meters is permitted. And also variance number six, which is the maximum length of the house, the applicant seeks 17.995 meters, whereas 17 meters is permitted. Now, we have provided a letter of objection. I'm just wondering, madam, if that can be pulled up? Because we've contained 18 photographs in our letter of objection. So basically, the purpose of us providing these photos is to show what sunlight my mother currently gets through her east-facing window at present. You'll see from the photographs that she gets sunlight commencing at 7:58 a.m., which these photographs were taken in May. And also to show what the projected shadow effect upon her property. So just to give a layout of the property, in the middle is the applicant's property at 443. It is currently a bungalow. To the west is my mother's property at 447. And directly to the east of the applicant's property is 441, and that is also a large house. So I think the shadow effect of 441... So I think the shadow effect of 441, the currently big house on the present-- on the present 443 Old Orchard Grove would be a good example of the shadow effect that we can expect to my mother's house if the applicant were to be permitted to build the proposed house. Basically, it will tower over my mother's house and cause and to eliminate her sunlight. And the photographs basically show that she would then get sunlight through her south-facing window at approximately 10 a.m. So these photographs basically show the difference and comparison between the current sunlight through 441 as it stands, so 443 as it stands today, and my mother's house 447. So my mother gets sunlight starting at around 7:00 a.m., 7:58 a.m. versus it would be 10 a.m. So as you can see, members of the committee, it is not acceptable that a neighbor lose sunlight, especially into an east-facing window, and furthermore lose sunlight into a south-facing window until 10 a.m. As the applicant is making their house longer than the house to its east, 441 Old Orchard Grove, it indicates that they do value sunlight. To date, the applicant has not conducted a shadow study, although they are making a house higher and longer than the permitted bylaws. It is blatantly obvious that it will tower next to my mother's house right next door and create a shadow effect. In contrast, my mother here has shown via her photographs that the sunlight she now gets will be eliminated should the proposed plan be allowed. My mother recognizes that the official plan promotes development, but the intent of the official plan is to take a very balanced approach. You know, basically, it is not to develop at the expense of neighboring properties to lose their sunlight. You saw the photographs. It is nicer to enjoy your morning coffee, your tea, talk, read, and sit in a room filled with sunlight, not in a shaded room.
You have less than one minute, please wrap up.
Yes, thank you. Yes, my mother's proposed plan is basically to have the neighbor move the entire house forwards by one meter that will allow the neighbor to keep the length of their desired house. Secondly, we would then ask the rear deck projection to be decreased to 2.5 meters from the proposed 3.3 meters. And we will also ask the southwest corner of the house be beveled, so basically to minimize any shadow effects. Alternatively, we ask that the committee basically order the applicant to basically conform the proposed house to the bylaws permitted, which is basically rear deck projection to be 2.5. Now, basically, if the committee denies this application, you know, the applicant can appeal it, whereas my mother, as immediate neighbor, as a participant, has no right of appeal. So it would be quite prejudicial for my mother to lose this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I will invite the-- is there any question panel member from this area resident? No question? Okay, so there's no question for you. So I want to invite the agent, Mr. Benkovsky, to come and address your issue.
Yeah, if we could bring up the plan of survey, please. So the neighbor to the west has a one-story bungalow. As we'll see on the plan of survey, the windows that they're showing are set back approximately 5.68 meters from that property line. So if we just zoom in, so those windows there are actually set in from the attached garage to the west. So that separation between the property line and that window is 5.68. If we were to add the 0.9 meter proposed side yard setback, we're at 6.58 meters. So that separation is very generous in terms of generally you would have a sidewall to a sidewall situation. You often don't have that great of a separation. If we were to look on the flip side at 441, we would essentially have a 0.9 meter and a 0.9 meter side yard separation to each house, which again is what the zoning bylaw permits. So in terms of that separation and how that affects sunlight, that mitigates any of that. Additionally, I believe maybe there was just a little misspoken of one of the variance requests. The variance request is not for a 3.3 meter rear deck projection, it's for a three-meter rear deck projection. And I just maybe think there was a little bit of misspeaking or not reading it correctly. Again, in terms of how this fits in with the neighborhood, I demonstrated through the photo book I prepared that we see there's numerous dwellings that are staggered along this portion of Old Orchard. One, due to the bend in the street, and also just again due to properties being developed over time. Change is going to happen. A two-story dwelling is permitted at this property. We are, yes, requesting a length variance. And again, it is very minimally past the adjacent dwelling to the east. Again, all impact is mitigated as it relates to the individual to the west through that large separation of a bungalow. Yes, there will be an impact from this development, but there's always going to be an impact when you take down a bungalow adjacent to a bungalow and you permit a new dwelling, similar to exactly what has happened with this property. As the development to the east occurred, where the house was built longer and built taller, this is the evolution of development. This happens throughout the city. Again, when you remove a bungalow and you replace that bungalow with a two-story dwelling adjacent to a bungalow, you are going to have some impact. And I think that addresses their concerns. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So panel member, do you have any question from Mr. Benkovsky? No question? If there is no question, can I have a motion? Oh, Mr. Kit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listening to the neighbor at 447 Old Orchard Grove, I'm sympathetic to her concerns around the shadowing effect that she's going to experience. But I also note that there's no height variance requested for this building height of this proposal. And also that I note that if the applicant built as a right, his building would still be a meter or two south of the neighbor's property. So there would be no benefit to the neighbor by refusing that variance with respect to the shadowing effect. I'm going to put forward a motion to accept this application subject to forestry condition.
We have a motion from Mr. Kit to accept this application with the forestry condition, second by Mr. Hunt, all in favor? Yes, the application approved.
Thank you.
So now the next application is application item number 24. The address is 282 Parkview Avenue. And the agent registered for this application is Ali Tanha. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Ali Tanha, 3317 Younger Street, Toronto.
Thank you very much. We don't have anyone registered to speak for this application. Panel member, do you have any-- do you need any presentation? Yes, Mr. Kit?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. I noticed in the urban forestry report, they're requesting a deferral. I wonder if the applicant has considered that at all?
Can I speak?
Yes, please proceed. And then if you have any modification to any variances, please mention the number of the variance and the changes you do, one by one. Thank you very much.
Sure. I have read the staff report for forestry report, and I'm aware of the concern about the new driveway. However, as it's only the driveway and the proposed driveways, the excavation for the proposed driveway will be only 12 inches from the ground, I don't see a huge concern to deal with that later with the application. And we are not proposing to removing any of those trees. So I'm not too concerned about that. Also, I would like to mention that there is a building permit issued March of last year for this property, for the same size house, and the location of the house on the property is the same. And that further assures me that we won't have major concerns as the construction itself once has been approved by the forestry department. In terms of the variances, unfortunately, I was not able to see the staff report on the portal, however, we have been in touch and have had conversations. We are proposing to modify number eight as suggested by the staff. The proposed side yard setback currently is 138. We agreed to increase that 1.4.
Yes.
And we have also submitted the site plan related to that. In terms of number four and five, I believe-- my question is, have you received the staff report? Or there is no staff report on this application?
Yes, the staff-- we received the staff report and it's projected on the screen. We received May--
I believe--
May 16, 2023, and there is three modification requests and one condition.
Yeah, okay. So number three, I mentioned regarding number one, number--
You mentioned number eight.
I mentioned number eight, yes. Can I see the staff report again, sorry? Oh, yeah, okay. So number one is referring to number four. So number four and five, proposed number of story is three. I would like to have a quick presentation regarding that. As the members noted recently, the definition of the main floor has changed. Therefore, some homes that previously were considered two stories, now they're considered three stories.
Yes, please proceed. You have five minutes. You can do presentation, you can do explanation, whichever you wish.
Sure. As I mentioned, the definition of the main floor has changed. Therefore, this house is considered three stories. However, based on the fact that there is an existing building permit for this property, for this floor plate, and the same style, if the staff could put on the presentation file provided-- I had prepared a plan comparing the existing building permit and what we are proposing.
Staff are currently pulling up the supporting material.
Okay. So basically, in that one, we are showing that the type of the house and how the main floor is located is matching what has been approved by the building department as a building permit. However, because the definition of the main floor has changed very recently, now it is considered three stories. So we agreed on-- with our conversations with the staff, we said we could potentially remove these two items by further lowering the basement level. And it is possible, however, due to the history of this house and also the fact that it is already has a-- it already has a building permit based on this look and this kind of type, I would like the committee-- I would like the committee to see if this is a valid reasoning for to keep the items. We keep number four and five. Otherwise, we would remove number four and five. Number five is--
Excuse me, sorry for interrupting you. I just would like to mention that we don't make a decision for you. We can't-- do let us know if you want to remove variance number four and five, or you would like to keep it.
I would like to keep number four and five, and number five is directly related to definition of number four.
And your time is-- you use your five minutes. Thank you very much. So-- if there is any more comment, otherwise I will go to the panel members. Okay, so is there any question for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Kit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listening to the presentation, did you mention that variance number four could be eliminated by lowering the basement, essentially changing the definition of it as the first floor?
Exactly, yeah. If we drop the basement slab a little bit, that variance would be removed. However, I said interior change is not going to change the impact outside, the look or the character of the house. That's why I'm asking--
You could do that without changing the first floor elevation?
No, it wouldn't change the first floor elevation.
Okay, thank you.
So any other question? If not, any motion? Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, I have a question, just referring back to the request for the deferral by urban forestry. I'd like to know if the applicant has considered the substance of what urban forestry is saying in requesting that deferral?
Yes, I have read the report, and it is basically the main concern is around a tree with a diameter of over one meter that is close to our driveway. However, as I mentioned, and they are saying that we are applying for injury for that tree, they are not-- they might not approve removal of that tree if the injury is substantial. However, based on the fact that this house already has a building permit and has been approved, so the construction itself is not going to change that. However, the driveway itself, because the depth of excavation is not much, and also we could possibly modify the change, the shape of the driveway a little bit, I'm not too concerned. The distance from the driveway to the trunk of the tree is over two meters in our proposal. So that's why I'm not very concerned about that. Another thing in the forestry report, the second page, I think, is from the previous committee of adjustment file for this house, which is very old and is not related to this. That's why I'm more confident that we can deal with forestry comment later. And if you consider the condition of forestry, we'll have our time to deal with that condition.
Well, you have-- you've mentioned in your presentation, sir, that on several occasions, you've talked about a building permit that has already been released for the construction of this house.
Yes.
What exactly is this application before the committee again, if you have approval to build it?
We have changed the design. The homeowner of this house has been changed, and therefore they came to us to design, do modification and redesign the house. So we have kept the floor plate of the house same size, almost same location. However, we have changed some aspects of the design to further tailor to the new homeowner. The previous building permit was issued in 2022. However, we have redesigned the house since, and we are asking for this new design to be approved.
And it's this new design that has initiated the planning department's request to remove variances four and five. Have you had a chance to look at the planning report in your review?
I was not able to download the staff report, as I said, it's not on the portal. However, I was in touch with the planner. However, I was in touch with the planner on the file, and I'm well versed on how she was reviewing this project. We had several conversations on this.
Okay, and that report indicates their position on variances four, five, and eight, and unless they're changed according to the report, they're recommending refusal.
Okay. If the, as I said, I didn't know how they wrote the report. If they're recommending refusal and the committee sees that way, we remove item four and five, and we modify number eight.
So would you please put the report on the staff report dated May 16 on the screen so that the applicant can see? Could you please scroll a little bit down so that there is a condition? Perfect. Thank you.
They didn't further explain. Yeah, so we would remove, eliminate number four and five, and we would modify number eight to 1.4 meters.
Thank you very much. And if you, if you read two paragraphs down, there is a conditional also that have been recommended by city staff, that the east side yard setback for the, sorry, for the cantilevered chimney bump out be developed accordance with the site plan drawing attached to the report attachment number one. That's also a staff.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other question from panel member? Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Do we, do we, Madam Chairman, have to address the requests from urban forestry to defer before we, I would think that the deferral request has to be dealt with before we can either approve or not approve this application.
So maybe we can ask Simon, the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, for the comment on that?
Mr. Hunt is correct. You should address forestry's deferral before you move on.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then, I'm, I'm, I'm going to put forward a motion to defer signee die this application in order for the applicant to deal with urban forestry regarding the tree and possibly revise coming back with respect to the planning department revisions.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt to defer this application signee die. So do I have a second for this? So I think I can also, do I have a second? No second? Anyone oppose? You oppose? Okay, so I can vote. I vote with Mr. Hunt to defer the application. So, and we have Mr. Kit opposing. Thank you. So your application deferred signee die. So now we are on application number 25, number 131 Citation Drive. And the applicant agent who registered is Francesco Fiorani. Good afternoon. Application number 25, 131 Citation Drive.
Francesco, you've been unmuted? Madam Chair, maybe we will move on to the next. Oh, I believe he might be having some audio issues, so we'll come back to him after.
Okay, we move, we just put item 25 on hold. We go item 26, 89 York Road. Then the agent applicant register is Pamir Rafiq. Good afternoon, Pamir Rafiq.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for our record.
Pamir Rafiq, address is 1435 Cornwall Road in Oakville, and I'm the agent speaking on behalf of the owner.
Thank you very much. Nobody registered to speak to this application. And we receive a staff report. Have you ever had a chance to, to review the staff report dated May 18, 2023?
Yes, I have.
So are you aware of the condition that the city staff suggested? That the building length and depth be developed in accordance with site plan?
Yes, yes, and we're okay with those conditions.
Thank you very much. Panel members, are you, do you want any presentation? No, if not, please, do I have a motion? Yes, Mr. Hunt, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this is fairly straightforward, and I would move approval of this application subject to the May 18th planning report, which requested the building length and depth be developed in accordance with the site plan attached to that report.
Thank you very much. Anyone seconded? Mr. Kit seconded. All in favor? This, this application approved with one condition of a staff condition. Thank you very much.
Amazing. Have a good night.
Good night. We are going back to item 25 is number 131 Citation Drive. Mr. Francesco Fiorani, good afternoon.
Francesco, you've been unmuted? Madam Chair, we'll try to call him over the phone and put him on speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Could you hear me now?
Yes, good afternoon. Please state your name and address for our record.
Francesco Fiorani from 113 Miranda Avenue. I'm the planning consultant on behalf of the client this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Panel members, do you require any presentation? There is no request for any presentation. Oh, sorry, Paul Kit, have a question?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Thank you. I wanted to ask the applicant if he was considering modifying variance number four as requested in the planning staff report.
So we are on application number 25, 131 Citation Drive.
Sorry about that. I have the wrong, I have the wrong application.
No problem. So, Mr. Francesco Fiorani, do you have anything to add to, to this hearing? Do you want to have a presentation? Any comments before we go to committee?
If committee would like a presentation, I'm more than happy to. I have reviewed the two variances for lot coverage. We're proposing 31.64%, whereas the minimum required is 30. And then the second variance being the main wall, which we're proposing 7.73 meters, whereas the minimum, the maximum permitted is 7.5. I believe both, both these variances present very minor deficiencies, and they meet the four tests. So unless staff or committee have any questions, I leave it to you.
Thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any question for the applicant agent? No question? If there is no question, can I get a motion? Yes, Mr. Kit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree. This is a minor request in terms of variances. I want to put forward a motion to accept the application subject to forestry condition.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Kit to approve this application. Second by Mr. Hunt. All in favor? So this application unanimously approved. Thank you. So now the next application is application item number 27. Item number 27 address is 8 Sunbeam Avenue, and the agent who registered is Noam Aizer Hazan or Hazen. Good afternoon.
I can't hear you.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Idels, OAA, and I'll explain why it's not Noam Hazan, but Richard Idels, and my address is 80 North Meadow Crescent, Thornhill, Ontario. I've been on, I've had many applications over the years. I believe a number of the committee members recognize me. What happened is, I'm the architect of record. You'll see my name is on the plans. Noam, who, who works with me, had be suddenly called to England because his grandfather is ill and in the hospital. And so I've had to step in, though he didn't formally, I don't think he formally requested that it be changed to me. So I hope this is okay.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you very much. So we have no one registered to speak to, oh, no, actually, we have a staff report, and there is some recommendation. So would you like to have a presentation?
Yes, yes. I can quickly go down the, very quickly go down the, go down the list of variances and explain exactly what we want to, what we're, what we'd like to do in a moment. Okay.
Madam Speaker, on a point of order, I believe that urban forestry has requested a deferral on this application in their May 5, the TPPR report. May 11, urban forestry recommends the application, the applicant defer.
I would like to ask city staff to put the report on the screen. Oh, it is on the screen. Thank you.
And if I may, in, to the applicant or the applicant representative, given your information that your client is away, and on the basis of this urban forestry request, do you see, what is your opinion on deferring the application?
My opinion is, if we could, if the committee wishes to defer it, if it could be deferred to the very next meeting, it's probably not something that you can, you can comment on this time.
Well, there is no guarantee that we can put you on the next, city staff can put you on the next agenda, but you have five minutes. You can, we can proceed. And just considering the fact that that's also we receive from urban forestry.
I mean, my, there's, there's, the owner is certainly willing to do everything, you know, to work with urban forestry. We're never going to, you know, not work with them. We always have in the past, and we will in the future. So I'm not sure why they want to defer for that reason. Oh, my gosh. Anyway, let's just get to the other variances, if you could, please.
Yes, please.
Very quickly.
Yes, proceed, please proceed.
Okay, okay, okay. Scroll down, please, and we'll just take one by one quickly. The first one is the pedestrian access, the stairs, basically, because it's a large family with a lot of kids and people going up and down the steps, we've asked to, the steps is in lieu of two meters, be two, 2.67 meters wide. It's really just for safety factors, and it's, you know, just more befitting to the house as well. I believe personally that that is fits the four categories. And number two is now the length, and also, we can do this together with number four, which is the building depth. Actually, the house itself is not that long. It's not that long because it's actually, if we look at the plan of the house, there is a bump out in the rear that's around 25 or 30% of the house, maybe even less, and that's counted in the coverage. So most of the length and the depth as well. So most of it, it's not house itself. It's just, you know, just a bit of the, it's a bump out in the back of the house. Also, we've done research, and there, there have been, and I could read off what they are, but there's a number of houses that have been granted, even without this type of a thing, which I believe is minor, have been granted extra length on their houses. I also want to point out that we are asking for not a lot of coverage. Which one, where is coverage here? Which one is coverage? I think you have the, yes, that number five. We're asking for 31.28 instead of 30%. So that only goes, it, you know, it sort of emphasizes my point that the, the extra length and depth of the house is not increasing the coverage by very much at all. And it's really a design and use thing that, that is counted for by a bump out. So I also believe that that's minor. Okay, if we could just go back, and now number four. Number four was commented. Number four and eight were comments by planning. And, and to be very brief about it, number four is, well, let's go to eight first, because that would help explain. The planning department has no, has a comment on eight, which we are 100% willing to abide by. The required setbacks are 1.8. It's supposed to be 1.8. On the west side, it's 1.22. They would, they would like us to put a condition on that, which we agree to, and that is as long as it is as per plan. In other words, it's only one room that's jutting out. Most of the, the vast majority of the house is, is, you know, complies with variance. And they want us to, you know, to keep to that, what's on the plan. And in other words, the length of it, we're totally willing to do that. Now, we have to read this, this variance together with variance number four.
Excuse me, your five minutes is, is over. Please wrap up.
Okay, just to wrap up, variance number four is really a canopy over that bump out that we're speaking about. And they're asking for, they are, they are asking that we comply with the setback that we're asking for as 1.22 is the setback for the canopy in lieu of 1.77. We would like to compromise with them because it's really, it's a, it's a small canopy, and we just want it for water protection, just have a little bit of an overhang over that setback. So instead of, we're willing to make the variance less and have a setback of 1.00 meters instead of 0.77.
Sorry, can you please mention the number of the variance and the new number?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's number four, variance number four.
Okay.
And, and we are, we are requesting to change the variance from 0.77 from the west side to 1.0.
1.0.
Yeah. Where the planning department was suggesting that, you know, we, we make that we do even more, we do 1.22, but we're asking for 1.0, just to have a few inches of, it's really eight inches, I think, seven, eight inches of overhang over that bump out.
And as a result, are you changing variance number eight, or it will stay, remain the same?
Yeah, number eight is fine, and, and, and planning is also fine with it. And my last statement about the forestry, we are 100% willing to work with forestry, and I don't think that. And I don't think that that should be a reason that we have to defer. I mean, we will definitely work with them. And we're not going to get a permit unless they're happy. I know from the past, we have to satisfy them.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So the applicant modified variance number four. They proposed rear canopy to one meter, and kept the variance number eight.
Side canopy. Mrs. Chairman, it's a sides canopy, I'm sorry. It's a west side canopy.
Yes. Rear canopy on the west sideline. It's a variance number four. It's now, instead of 0.77 meter, is now proposed to be one meter. And now it's up to panel member. At this, this is a new modification. At the same time, we have a request from Urban Forestry that you, you heard the applicant, the architect explanation. It's up to you if you want to put, if you want to defer, approve. So I leave it with you, panel member. Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like a point of clarification. Can we, are we, I think we're required to deal with the deferral request. Is it appropriate, and I guess this is through to Mr. Lam, is it appropriate for us to acknowledge Urban Forestry's deferral request? And rather than defer, we're going to leave it to them to make their decision on the basis of what their request was?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think this is in committee's hands at this moment. There is a deferral request on the table from Forestry. So it's in your hands. You can defer, approve, modify, refuse. But it can't be, it cannot be put on to the next hearing only because it's deferred, so that they can talk to Forestry. We don't know when they will get around to talking to Forestry. So just for your information, it will be deferred until that reason why it's deferred is satisfied. But the deferral request is in the committee's hands.
Yes, Mr. Kidd, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to put forward a motion to accept the application as revised. Variance number four, the proposed rear canopy is one meter from the west side lot line. And with respect to the Urban Forestry's request for deferral.
So, Mr. Kidd, sorry for interrupting you, Mr. Kidd. First, let's, first, we want to deal with the deferral, if there is any motion for deferral or not. And then we will go with another motion.
Through you, Madam Chair. You don't have to make a motion. If you want to go forward, just clarification. If you want to defer, then we'll get a motion. But the committee members should decide amongst themselves now whether they want to go forward or not.
I want to go forward on this. I don't want to defer, but...
Okay.
Yeah, so can I carry on? With my motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay. With respect to Urban Forestry, I'm just looking at their report here. It says, "Tree impact removal does not relate directly to any specific variance. Therefore, Urban Forestry is not recommending denial at this point." I'm going to, I'm going to make this application subject to forestry condition and allow the applicant to work out, work out any problems with, with forestry. I'm going to also make it subject to the planning staff condition that variance number eight, where the proposed west side yard setback be limited to the family room on the first story.
And what about variance number four? The applicant also...
Yeah, I thought I read that in. But yes, variance number four, to read, proposed rear canopy is one meter from the west side yard lot line.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Kidd to approve this application with one modification, variance number four. The proposed rear canopy on the west side, west lot line is now one meter. And also add the condition of, on variance number eight and subject to Urban Forestry. Do I get a second for this motion?
Yes, I can support the wording of Mr. Kidd's motion.
Perfect. So we have Mr. Hunt seconded, all in favor? Yes. So this application approved with those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
So now we are going on application number, item number 28, is number 54 Westgate Boulevard. And the applicant agent is Richard Lebrach. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Richard Lebrach. I'm an architect representing the owner. And my address is 3414 Gomster Street.
Thank you very much. We don't have anyone who's, who registered to speak for this application. Panel members, do you require any presentation? Do you have any question?
No, I don't.
Yes, Mr. Kidd, please.
We're on application 28, is that correct?
We are 28, 24 Westgate.
I just want to, I wanted to know if the applicant was going to modify variance number three and 12 as set out in the planning staff report?
Yes, I apologize. I've had some trouble listening with my connection. I should have gone to that immediately. In speaking with the planning department, they had requested in our conversation that variance three be increased from 0.81 to 0.9 meters. So the proposed side yard setback would now read 0.9 meters.
This is variance number three.
Yeah, that's right. And in doing so, I submitted a revised site plan dated May 18, I believe, in the file, which reflects that change. And therefore, also takes the stairs. Let's see, exterior stairs. You mentioned variance 12?
That's right. Variance 12, that city staff request.
That's right, yes, yes. Okay, yes. And Ms. Corvelli also was pleased with the result of that change, such that the stairs are now not on zero meters. They now are 0.12 meters from the south lot line. So you're correct. So variance three is corrected, is changed to 0.9. And variance 12 is changed to 0.12 meters.
Is there any question from the applicant?
I don't have any questions for the questions.
And you don't, you don't want to add any comment? If there is no question and comment, can I get a motion? Yes, Mr. Hunt, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I believe that the applicant has modified the plan according to the planning department request. So based on the modification of variance three, which is the side yard setback from 0.81 to 0.90 meters, and modifying variance 12, the stair from the south lot line has been increased from zero meters to 0.12 meters. I move acceptance of this application.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt to approve this application with, with two changes that he mentioned. Second by Mr. Kidd, all in favor? Yes, this application approved with those modifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we want to take, how about having 10-minute break? We will get 10-minute break, and then we'll come back at 10 past 5. You don't have any comment. Okay. Okay, perfect. So panel member, if there is no comment and question, would you please put forward a motion? We are on item 29, 123 Headington Avenue. Oh, Mr. Paul Kit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel this is an appropriate proposal for this property and needs four tests. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application without condition.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mr. Kit to approve this application with no condition. Do I get second for this motion?
May I ask a question? We're on 54 West Gate Boulevard, correct?
We are number, item number 29, 123 Headington Avenue.
Okay, I second.
Okay, Mr. Ron seconded, all in favor. Yes, this application approved with no condition.
All right. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And have a good afternoon.
Same to you. Now we are on item 30, it's 229 Florence Avenue. Item number 30, 229 Florence Avenue. David Ehrball is the agent registered for this application. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is David Ehrball. I am the architect for this project, also the agent.
Would you please?
My address is 14961 Youngest Street, Unit B, Aurora, Ontario, L4G1M5.
Thank you very much. There are some area residents, actually their owner and son of the owner and one area resident that would like to speak. So would you please just provide us a quick presentation?
Definitely. Thank you for the opportunity.
And sorry for interrupting you. Before you go forward the presentation, because there are three names. There is an agent like David Ehrball and Faridun and Barrestani and Ali Reza and Barrestani. There are three people who would like to speak. All three people can speak, but you only have five minutes. Five minutes in total.
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't think the owner would like to speak at this time. I just do the speaking right now.
Perfect. Thank you. You have five minutes. You can just use it as you wish.
Thank you very much. The owner for this project, they want to build their family home, rebuild it. Basically, we proposed a minor variance with four items to the planning department. Planning department came back to us asking that we should do some revision to keep the building in line with what has been approved upon the property before. And since the owner also is very cooperative, we were able to manage to add what all the planning comments that we received. As a result, we had four minor variance items and we were able to eliminate one of them, which was a three-story building, three-story level.
Sorry for interrupting you. Would you please go with the variance number and then the changes? For example, variance number one, what if you're modifying it, give me the modified number. Thank you.
Definitely. Basically, the first variance was number one, proposed building height. What we proposed originally was 10.821. The planning asked that we reduce to 10.10 and that's what we reduced it to. The second variance was removing the third level, third story from the application. We modified the drawing, signed the placement. As a result, now we don't have this variance and it has been removed. And then
Perfect. Variance number three eliminated.
Variance number, actually that was variance number three that, yes, that was eliminated.
Yes.
And then we had the maximum lot coverage, which was variance number four, which we were asked to reduce it from 32.6%. We now are at 31 to 96%, which is less than 22% that the planning asked us to reduce it to.
Perfect.
So basically, we had four items. We are now at three items.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else you want to add? And we have a forestry condition. Panel members, do you have any question from this agent? Yes, Mr. Kit, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, we're having some audio difficulty here. What are you revising variance number four? You're changing it from 32.6 to, I didn't get the new figure.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. What we did for item number four, the planning asked us to reduce it to 32%. Originally, we were at 32.6%. And so at this point, we are 30.96%. So it's less than 32% that we were asked to do.
Is that 31.96?
31.96.
Thank you.
Perfect. Is there any question from the applicant? No? If there is no question, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, there's one more individual.
Yes, sorry for that. Yes, there is one more, one of the area resident who registered to speak. And the name is Gazella Fabroso. Gazella Fabroso, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm Gazella Fabroso at 227 Florence Avenue. We are the neighbors on the east side from the proposed building. My concern is really the proximity of the building and the height of the building that will eliminate a lot of our sunlight on the west side. Now, because of the proximity of the building, which is about 1.2 meters between the two walls, I feel that a lot of our privacy is going to be impacted because we have a dining room window about six feet from the corner of our house. And if the new building has a window on the side, I would really appreciate it if it would be offset so that our privacy is not impacted. Also, there is a mature maple tree in their backyard, which is over 50 years old. I know that because we have lived in this house for 55 years and that tree was already on the lot next door. I would very emphatically ask that that tree would not be impacted in any way. Now, if, also, I believe the gentleman explained that the height of the building was going to be reduced, which I'm glad for. These are my concerns and I would appreciate the committee to go and have a look at it.
Thank you very much. Panel member, do you have any question from this neighbor on the east? No question. Okay, I would like to invite the Mr. Ehrball to come back and address the concern of the neighbor.
Through you, Madam Chair. Gazella, I will definitely shift that window for her. We don't want any disturbance or, you know, removing any privacy for her. Definitely. And the tree at the back, we are building far from it, so she doesn't have to be worried about that. We definitely hear her and we will make the changes so she's happy.
Okay, thank you. So any question from the applicant? If no question, I want a motion. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listen to the applicant and to the neighbor. And I believe that the applicant has addressed their concerns. So I would move to approve this application with the following changes. One, modify variance number one, the proposed building's height from 10.821 meters to 10.10 meters. To remove variance three for the proposed third story. And to modify variance four for the proposed lot coverage from 32.60 to 31.96. And it's also subject to forestry conditions. And that's my motion.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We have a motion for Mr. Ron to approve this application with some modifications. Mr. Kit seconded, all in favor. So this application approved with those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So the next item is item 31. The address is 1881 Leslie Street. And the agent that registered for this application is Jonathan Benkovsky. Good afternoon.
Good evening, committee. Good evening, committee, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Jonathan Benkovsky, 301 Kiwattan Avenue.
Thank you. So we have a planner registered to speak to this application. Therefore, I would like to ask you to provide us a brief presentation.
Yes, if we could bring up the public notice first, please.
That's the staff are currently pulling up the presentation material.
Actually, the public notice first, please. I would just like to quickly point something out. This application was originally deferred to, in order to conduct a parking study that was from October 6th of 2022. We completed a parking study, we submitted it to the city. And as you can see from the AIC, parking no longer has any objection to the proposal or requesting any more information. So to the best of my knowledge, transportation has reviewed, has not commented and has accepted our parking justification for the reduction in parking. I'd also like to note something else here, where we see the requested variances to the zoning bylaw. We see it's section 6, a 2A bylaw 7625. This property is entirely governed by the old, well, in this case, not the old North York zoning bylaw, but by the North York zoning bylaw. Hence, the request before you today is to reduce the parking requirements of 7625, not of the new City of Toronto harmonized 569 2013. So the request before you is for the entirety of the site, not for just one portion of the site. I'd also like to note that if this property were subject to the zoning bylaw of 569 2013, this would require a minimum of zero parking spaces, up to a maximum of 100 parking spaces. And what we see here is we're providing 97, which is three less than the maximum. So if this were 569 2013, there would actually be no minor variance request before the committee today as the minimum parking requirement before the committee today, as the minimum parking requirement for this property is zero. We are proposing ninety seven. If we could now go to my support material, please? So the proposal before you today is for a side addition located on the southern portion of the existing building. The addition will not be set, will not be visible from the streetscape directly in front as it is located behind the existing Dollarama that is at the property today. I've just given you a couple of kind of brief snapshots here to just kind of maybe set the stage of where this property is located. This is located just to the north, uh, of, of Elsmere and Leslie, just to the northeast of it. Uh, we see there, we have high-rise buildings, we have an established neighborhood, uh, really within a lot of walking distance of the amenities that this, this property would provide. What I've also done here is I've shown you a couple of brief snapshots. We're the building in the middle. So this property has two functional buildings on it. The proposal is for the, the portion that is at the front. The rear is occupied by an automotive use with the front being retail. What we can see here through these snapshots, really is just, and again, these are from the city website, uh, Toronto Maps, these are not, um, I, I couldn't tell you what time of the day they're taken at, but I can tell you the years they're taken in, just to give you kind of a, a little idea of what the pro, the property functions, what the parking situation is. And from this picture and really from all three of them, we can really see an abundance of available parking uh, on the property, uh, and that was actually evident in our parking study also that we provided. So just quickly to summarize the appropriateness of this, we are again located along Leslie, a major street in the official plan, a major street in the zoning bylaw. And it would be my opinion that the appropriateness of an additional, uh, one hundred and seventy square meters, this is not a large addition by any means, this is an addition of one hundred and seventy meters to the existing building to accommodate an additional commercial space. Where again, if this were under five six nine two thousand and thirteen, there would be no request before the committee of adjustment, as the minimum bylaw requirement for this property, uh, would be zero. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions or, or address the concerns of the adjacent neighbor.
Thank you very much. Panel member, do you have any question? No? So now I would like to invite, uh, the planner who would like to speak, uh, David McKay. Good afternoon.
Good, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of committee. Uh, David McKay, registered professional planner with MHBC, seventy fifty Western Road, Bond, Ontario, suite twenty to two thirty. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for hearing us today. I represent the landowner to the immediate south, Morguard. And as I've pointed out, uh, our client does not believe that the variances as requested are minor nature. And despite what, uh, the applicant has said, this is a bylaw requirement of the current bylaw as it applies to the property. And while I agree that, uh, that parking reductions are the future and move moving forward, they still need to be justified. And that is clearly what was said in all the staff reports dealing with the parking bylaw reductions that, uh, for five six nine twenty thirteen. Our client has retained their own traffic consultant to look at the property, that looked at it in the month of May, that evaluated and showed that a peak parking demand, uh, is not being, uh, is not being met. And it is the front portion where the addition is happening, which creates the demand, the automotive is low in terms of demand, but it's also located at the rear. If someone know, you know, if you, we all go to shops, we go to where we can park easily, it gets close to the door as possible, and that's what creates the problem. What we've identified is that there are cross parking occurring between the sites, so the parking on eight, for eighteen eighty one on Morguard's property, that also then increases the demand as identified by the closure report. And lastly, when you evaluate their, their proposed site plan, it simply doesn't function. There are spaces that don't meet the bylaw requirements, either by law requirements, five six nine or seventy six twenty five. There are, uh, drive aisles did not function and don't meet the bylaw requirements. There are proposed parking that, that to get them, they would have to cross adjacent properties where there are no easements in place. So frankly, this is a misguided application at this point in time. And I would request, as, uh, in my letter, either denial of the application or if committee would allow, further time for our, the two landowners to discuss, see if there is a possible resolution to this matter. The last item I'd like to note is that transportation staff have not provided the clearance on their traffic study. They've simply not provided comments yet. And if you know, and as staff will advise, transportation staff is very backed up in terms of the review of applications. So for the applicant to say they're all happy with it is not true. And frankly, is, is, is not appropriate. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions that committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, panel member, do you have any question? No question. Okay. Oh, Mr. Kit? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the, the last speaker mentioned that, uh, his, his client had a parking study done, uh, has, uh, can we take a look at that? Is, uh, has he got a copy of that?
Um, staffer, um, staffer currently pulling, um, a copy on the screen.
Do you? So, uh, just a question from the applicant. And did the applicant ask for deferral earlier?
We did, Madam Chair. In order to complete the parking study, which was submitted to transportation, uh, or the committee of adjustment on April thirteenth, and I assume would have been circulated to them, and they have not commented, which yes, does mean they are okay with our parking study and they have accepted it. I do acknowledge that they are busy, but I can tell you, they requested a deferral also from the first meeting. So if we were to go back to the comments from the original meeting, transportation also requested a deferral for the parking study. I would find it very odd for them to request a deferral of a parking study, receive a parking study, not comment on a parking study, and now we're going to infer that they haven't reviewed it, reviewed it, or they may still have an issue with it. I just find that very hard to believe, uh, in this instance, Madam Chair, again, seeing as they requested a deferral for the parking study.
Okay. And then I also would like to ask the, um, the, Mr. David McKay, um, or McKay, um, did you request for any deferral earlier?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we did. We said we had objections previously. We requested a deferral, as did transportation staff. Uh, when we were advised of this meeting coming up and we're provided the additional information in terms of the traffic study, we reviewed it and had our client undertake, uh, the traffic study that's before you today by Croziered Associates. And so that has been provided to the committee as well. And again, right now, we have two opposing views on what is appropriate in terms of parking demand on the site. Um, and as I said, I don't normally object to parking reductions. And so if committee thinks that there is an issue here, then we should defer or deny it. But if they're, if they think there's merit in further discussion occurring between the property owners to come to an amicable resolution, I would suggest a, a deferral, because really this is, affects each of their businesses. It's very important, and as I'd mentioned before, there are no easements between the property owners. So my client could put up a fence right along the property line and cut off all the access to the proposed parking on their property, as shown on the plans. And maybe if staff could go to the last slide of, uh, page thirty nine of this report, I will show sta, uh, show the committee where I was saying that there are issues with the, um, with the site plan that's presented to committee. If you go right down to the last page. So, yeah, and then just slide over there. So you can see, we've identified where there isn't adequate, uh, barrier-free access aisles on the one, on the one side in, in orange. There are drive aisles that don't meet minimum lengths. There are parking spaces that don't meet minimum lengths. There are properties on the south side that cross over to access those spots that can't function. There are projections, waste bins in the way as well. And on the north side, where they're proposing, uh, parking, they've only got a three point one meter drive aisle, uh, which frankly is, is barely functional and doesn't meet the requirements. So that's why what I'm saying is that what is proposed before you today, committee, just is not reality. And I would request, as I said, either denial on the face of this, or a deferral so we can try to work things out and maybe come to an amicable resolution between our, the two clients.
And, uh, just another quick question, because I was looking at the package that I received. Uh, the, what you're referring to, is this submitted later? Like, is it a late report that you submit? Because it's not included in my package that I received early.
Yes, we, we, we prepared this and it was, was not available until, uh, Tuesday and we submitted it as soon as it was available.
So it means you submitted on Wednesday, Wednesday?
I think it came in, it stated Wednesday, yes.
There should be a timestamp on the, that indicates the date that it was.
Okay, because I couldn't see, find it while you were just explaining. I couldn't find it in my package. Okay, so May twenty fourth, so the day before our hearing. So, um, all right, thank you very much for clarification. Um, did we receive any, any letter or email from MetroLinks regarding this application?
Um, through you, Madam Chair. Um, we will show on the screen then an advisory memo that we received from MetroLinks, um, today.
Would you please zoom in so we can read? Thank you. So, Mr. Benkovsky, have you seen this MetroLinks report earlier?
Uh, I have not, Madam Chair, but that, that's fairly standard, um, for really any application that's, uh, close to any type of MetroLinks corridor.
Okay. Panel member? Yes, Mr. Kit?
Thank you, Ma, Madam Chair. I, I just have a question for Mr. Benkovsky. Um, uh, uh, Mr. McKay mentioned that, uh, I, I, I don't fully understand what, uh, all the issues out here. One of the things he did mention was that if his client put up a fence along his property line, he, uh, would be blocking, uh, a, a significant chunk of the additional parking. Can you respond to that statement, please?
I, I can absolutely through you, Madam Chair. If we could bring up, um, there's a set of plans on the AIC that's, uh, September thirteenth, twenty twenty two. That would be the request essentially that is before you today. Um, when I was retained on this file, the, the, um, site plan that, that was shown there was the one that I received and, and which is, which is not the correct one, there would be another set. There's another set, uh, on the AIC specifically labeled September thirteenth, which is that, yes, it would probably be the latest ones. Uh, when I originally saw this, I completely agree that the site was not functional. Um, there, there was parking provide, proposed everywhere, but the set of plans that is before you today that has ninety seven spaces, which matches the variances, has removed the portions to the north. Yeah, if we could just keep going. They're, they're on the AIC. Um, it has removed all of that and the, and the site is fully functional. And if his client wished to put up a fence, they would not remove any of the parking spots on this property. And it goes both ways through you, Madam Chair. Um, and even their parking report addresses that there is crossover parking between both sides, meaning the, the residents or the, the users of this property park on the adjacent property to the south. And that property on the south also parks on this one. This is a continuous strip along Leslie. But what I can assure you is that the site plan, um, again, dated September thirteenth on the AIC is fully functional on the site.
Staff are currently, uh, pulling up the, uh, the site plan as requested.
You can continue with the comment and tell staff bring your, um, the requested page?
Uh, yeah, I think I would just like to go back to, we, we are providing ninety seven spaces in its entirety on the property itself. Um, so that's, that's not the, the correct set. That is the, the incorrect one, that yes, would not be functional.
Okay.
So, but I can confirm that, yes, all, all, all parking spaces would be accessible within this site and would not require any type of crossover onto adjacent properties. All ninety seven.
Is this the file that you're referring to?
It is. Sorry, I actually have it up here. Uh, it's not date stamped on the AIC when I download it, but it's one point four one megabytes in size. I can tell you that. There's two sets that are, that are date stamped on September thirteenth. There's a smaller package and then a larger package. That's it. That's it. That's correct. Yeah. So as we see here, there is no, uh, access required onto adjacent properties. So the, the angled portions on the north, correct, are, are gone, because they would have required access off that adjacent property. And we, we actually do provide now the aisle, the drive aisle width along the south where we see the proposed additions. There are no spots located in tandem there. It's fully within this property. Um, uh, and, and again, they, if they were to fence off their portion, it would not affect this at all. But again, I'd still like to go back to, there are ninety seven spots being proposed on this property.
Okay, any, any question, concern from staff? So we have, we listened to the presentation of Mr. Benkovsky, we listened to the presentation of David McKay, and we, we received late, um, MetroLinks report. There are different, and, and we also have a, a deferral request on table, so we can just, um, see if you want to defer. Or there's a lot to process. Yes, Mr. Kit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I was on the panel where this was originally, uh, deferred and uh, I do hesitate to defer it again. Um, we have, uh, uh, competing, uh, uh, parking studies, uh, uh, but in the end, I think I, I gotta rely on the fact that there's, uh, no negative comments from uh, uh, city planning staff and, and, or, or from transportation, who I assume have uh, both examined this, uh, project. Um, I, I'm gonna put forward a motion to accept the application.
Okay, thank you.
Um, without condition. Thank you.
Without condition. So we have a motion from Mr. Kit to Without condition. So we have a motion from Mr. Kit to approve this application with no condition. Do I get second? It's taken by Mr. Hunt. All in favor? Great, the application approved with no condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on agenda is item 32. It's 122 Riverview Drive. Item 32. So the agent on this file is Francesco Di Sara. Good evening. Item 32. Hello, good evening. Please state your name and address for the committee for the record.
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Francesco Di Sera. I'm the architect and agent acting on this file.
Thank you. So.
My address is 10320 Pine Valley Drive, Woodbridge, Ontario.
Thank you. So we, this application, we receive a city staff report and please provide us some presentation or if there is any modification, please go with the number of the variants and the modification in which you're doing to the file, the changes, one by one. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the committee. This matter was deferred back in March 23rd by the committee to discuss with planning staff and resolve some issues. We have been able to resolve many of the issues and have made some modifications to our variances. I will go through them now. So the first variance is number one that we're modifying. We originally were asking for a point eight nine FSI. We are reducing that to point seven. The second variance we are altering is variance number three. We're originally asking for point nine side yard setback. We are increasing that to 1.05 meters. The next variance we are altering is number six. Again, that was a point nine side yard variance. We are increasing that to 1.05 as well. And we are eliminating variance number eight.
Thank you very much. So panel member, is there any question from the applicant agent? No question. So. Is Mr. Di Sara, is there any comment before we go to committee? Anything you would like to add?
No, we believe we've satisfied planning staff. So we're happy with our proposed assistance.
So are you aware of the other two condition that staff recommended stated on May 18, 2023 staff report?
Yes, they are asking that it be tied to the site plan and to the side elevations, and we have no issue with that.
Norton side, south side elevation. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
So panel member, if you, do you have a question, Mr. Hunt?
I'm ready for a motion.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the presentation from the agent and the indication that they have worked with planning, I would move approval of this predicated on the following. Modify variance one FSI from 0.89 to 0.70 times coverage. Number two, modify variance three, the north side yard setback from 0.90 meters to one point or increase, sorry, from 0.90 meters to 1.05 meters. Number three, modify variance six, the north side yard setback again from 0.90 to 1.05 meters. Eliminate variance eight with respect to the rear yard landscaping and subject to the conditions that, one, the side yard setbacks be developed in accordance with the site plan drawing attached to their report and, two, the side exterior main walls be developed in accordance with the north and south side elevation drawings.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt. Do I get second? Second by Mr. Kit. All in favor?
Excuse me. Excuse me, it's, I think there was a forestry condition on that. Did Mr. Hunt, did you want to include that as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
We have a, we have a motion from Mr. Hunt and a friendly amendment by Mr. Kit to add forestry. All in favor? Yes, thank you very much. This application approved with those conditions.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. The next application will be item 33, 551 Mont Pleasant Road. Application 33. So the agent for this application is David Bronskill. Good evening. The agent is David Bronskill. Good evening. Please state your.
Oh, it's, thank you. I've just been unmuted. It's Valdemar Nickel from NOR Architects on behalf of.
Sorry, would you please state your name and address one more time?
Yes, it's Valdemar Nickel from NOR Architects at 175 Bloor Street. And my friend and co-presenter is David Bronskill from Goodman's. And I will just, we're both representing Caribou Productions.
So both of you would like to speak, correct?
We are at your disposal, yes.
So you both come, you have five minutes, so you can share in between like you and.
Correct, yes.
Okay, you can start a presentation.
Very good. So we're here before you today and I'm actually very excited today because we're presenting a proposal to revitalize and regenerate the Regent Theater into a live performance venue. It's been around for almost, almost 100 years. And we're here before you to housekeep several matters because this is a legal, lawful, non-conforming use. So we're here to provide some housekeeping for that and then do a small rear addition to the east portion of the building. That's approximately 400 square meters, 421 square meters, thank you, and over three floors. And perhaps in the interest of time, maybe we can scroll through the graphics. Thank you. And rather than me going through detailed matters, I'm available, as is my friend, to discuss any specific questions. I would also like to just say that we are under site plan approval and we have been at this process for just over a year. We've had two voluntary public meetings and multiple meetings with neighbors and residents over the past several months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perhaps if we scroll to the back again, the theater has been in existence for 100 years to the last graphic. We could look at what the proposal is for the rear addition. And the idea is to regenerate the theater, preserve the heritage, celebrate that heritage. And we're actually reducing the number of seats in the theater from the existing 600 down to 400 and renovating it to have a truly modern operational live performance venue in the city. And the graphics you're seeing in front of you right now, that is the rear addition that is being proposed. It is a three-story addition with a pitched roof. And it's, and there's a small addition at the front as well if we scroll down to the last one. So thank you. I will close my comments at the moment. But overall, we believe the variances requested are certainly minor in nature and appropriate and desirable and meet the intent of the zoning bylaw and official plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, Mr. Bronskill?
Madam Chair, I see there's two minutes. I won't take all of it. I would just note for the committee, just a couple of housekeeping matters. I just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware of the withdrawal of a few of the letters of opposition from residents on Bell Side, which are to the south. I just wanted to make sure that the committee has seen those having been withdrawn. I believe emails came in this afternoon from those residents. It means, Madam Chair, and for the panel, that all of the immediately adjacent residents to the north and to the south have withdrawn objections and are not in opposition. And Madam Chair, I also wanted, there had been some confusion, I think, just with Heritage initially asking for a deferral. They've now instead asked for a condition of approval. We are in agreement with that condition. There are urban forestry conditions that are the standard conditions that we are in agreement with. And there's a planning staff report indicating a condition for approval that we are in agreement with. So all of the different staff departments, Madam Chair, are in support of this exciting opportunity, as my friend noted, to revitalize frankly a North Toronto institution. I grew up in Leeside, a little bit to the east, but I'm thrilled to be here today to see that this theater can be repurposed and brought back to its former glory in a way that frankly will make it a hub for the community. So I'm also thrilled to be here today to advocate for it.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, I forgot to ask. I forgot to ask you for you to state your name and address for the record.
I can confirm that, Madam Chair. It's David Bronskill speaking, Goodman's LLP, 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400 in Toronto.
Thank you very much. So panel member, do you have any question? No question. Okay, so if there is no question, so we have a number of resident who register and number of them, they already withdraw to speak. So the first person on my list is Andy Wilson and Janet Wilson. Good evening.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for our record.
My name is Andy Wilson. I'm at 41 Hadley Road. And I'd actually asked staff to have handy the last couple pages of my written objection that contains scans of the developer's presentation material at an earlier meeting.
Okay, please proceed. The city staff are trying to find your letter.
Okay, BAJW, I think is it. So if you could open up BAJW, is that the one that has the scans or is that separate? And please, I hope time isn't running yet because this is staff's time, not mine.
You can proceed?
There, okay, good. So I'll start now then. "The issues of the application not being for variances that are either minor, appropriate or in keeping with existing codes, bylaws, or plans are dealt with extensively in written objections, including ours, particularly a detailed submission by Henry Poon and family, to which I fully subscribe. And if that is withdrawn, I will adopt it as my own. My comments here address the fact that this isn't even a matter of variance of existing zoning code. Powers granted to the committee of adjustment in sections 44 and 45 of the Planning Act relate to authorization of minor variance from bylaw. As such, wholesale reselling from our residential to CR, FS2 commercial residential isn't a minor variance and variances applied for can only be considered if section 34.9 of the Planning Act legal non-conforming use exemption applies. However, that exemption only applies so long as it continues to be used for that purpose. The committee acknowledges and makes that argument in the zoning, in an earlier meeting, stating the proposal is an expansion of a legal non-conforming use of a place of entertainment place of assembly. Rather than simply accepting assertions of the developer and an enthusiastic and promotional city councillor that legal non-conforming use exists, the committee must follow due process under section 42A, 45 to AI to ensure that continued use exists and indeed has the powers to consider variance based on application of section 34.9. I've seen no submissions or evidence as to continued use that would allow a challenge to the evidentiary record or allow the committee to make such a determination based on due process. Indeed, the developer has itself admitted the continuous use requirement of section 64.9 of the Planning Act is not fulfilled. Could you scan to the final page? In the FAQ handed out April 13th, the developer states in the last few decades, the theater has fallen into disuse. There cannot simultaneously be continued use and disuse. Starting 2002, the region's primary use other than frontage for a store, sock store, Bad Socks, was as post-production facility, Theater D Digital. Chapter 40 of the zoning bylaw describes permitted uses at 40.10.20.10, including production studio. This is an entirely separate use from permitted use with conditions of entertainment assembly described under 40.10.20.20 the applications relying on. The filed architectural plan shows the uses for the eastward expansion primarily comprised rehearsal community space. The zoning bylaws, and these are different uses under 40.10.20.20 of the zoning bylaw and are not the same as entertainment place of assembly. Occasional use of an existing theater as an event space cannot justify the creation of a separate space for that purpose, particularly when other such spaces available nearby. Also, there's no shortage of potential rehearsal space nearby that would require construction of dedicated space. If the Rolling Stones can twice use Greenwood School two blocks south to rehearse for world tours, I imagine a Newfoundland-based group transferring modestly priced budgeted productions can find appropriate space. The legal non-conforming use must also be unchanged from its previous use. The theater is reducing by 200 seats, so the developer is reducing the scale of the entertainment place of assembly on one of the project in its existing space. In fact, the entire extension of the project onto property zoned residential appears to be for uses other than entertainment places of assembly. Even the project's scale constitutes a change of use. The Regent Theater was listed for sale in 2017 for $9 million. It seems no business case could be made for continued use at that price level. And in 2020, it sold for $7.4 million. Developer in April told the Golden Mail that the budget for the rebuild is $50 million.
Sorry, you have less than one minute?
That wouldn't include the cost of at least seven abutting properties on Bell Side and Hadley that the developers has picked up in recent weeks. Following the money, the sheer size and scale of the operation required to recoup an apparent $60 to $80 million investment can do nothing other than constitute a massive change of properties' former use, particularly that being imposed on the Hadley Road face of the property. I believe the proposal constitutes a change of use on so many levels that no legal non-conforming use exemption can be available. I believe that the committee has no basis to consider this as what's needed is an actual zoning change and that power rests with the city council. We would support such change were they made to the properties on Bell Side.
Your time is over.
Has currently purchased and it already abut the Regent to the north and the laneway and other commercial properties and infrastructure to the west.
Thank you very much for your comment. Your five minutes is, we have number of resident is over. We have a number of resident that would like to talk. Perfect, I go to next person on the list, David Harris. It's area resident. Good evening.
I'm chairing one of our committee members. Can you hear me? Okay.
Madam Chair, one of our committee members. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, please state your name and address for our record.
Of course. I'm David Hirsch, and I live at 23 Hadley Road.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I am generally opposed to the application as it stands. I think that, on the other hand, it is very admirable and honorable that the applicant wishes to renovate this very important Toronto structure. This theatre opened in 1927, and it was known as the Bell Size Theatre. It was part of the famous Players chain of theatres. It had 700 seats, the main floor and 200 on the balcony. In 1953, the theatre became a live theatre, and it was known as the Crest. We have performances by Barbara Hamilton and Spring Thaw, Jacques Brel's Alive and Well Living in Paris, and the last performance was Little Shop of Horrors. It was reopened again in 1971 as the Regent Theatre. It is obviously a very important landmark in the city. Not having been said, I believe the application is not well-founded and is hardly minor in nature. I would like to draw your attention to the letter submitted objection by Mr. Poon, who was immediately adjacent to this property, and he was ostensibly withdrawing his application. It is a shame that Mr. Poon has seemed fit to do so. On the other hand, the developer has no doubt offered a tremendous amount of money to acquire his property. I believe the property should be subject to a zoning bylaw amendment and an official plan amendment. This will then compel the developer to perform a traffic impact study, a stormwater manager study, a shadow study, a planning justification report, and perhaps even a business plan. I find it quite, I'm very miffed by the amount of money that is being proposed to be injected into this project when in general, live theatre is not a hugely money-making proposition. The application as it stands now simply glides over zoning and official plan questions that were put forward by both by Mr. Poon and the prior decadent, where it is obvious that the zoning problem must be fixed by city council. This is a tremendously poor use of land and land use planning, and has insufficient support to warrant a simple application to the Committee of Adjustment. The committee's application, sorry, the proponent's application contains 13 variances in order for it to comply with various standards in the city. The application does not meet the full standards of the, under the Planning Act that the committee must respect. Mr. Poon's letter, 47 pages in length, I know it's a hard read, we're all busy, but it is quite thorough. I am particularly concerned about the traffic impact of this expansion. We know traffic impact study has been provided. The applicant, again, simply glides over that and suggests that parking is readily available nearby. I would imagine he's referring to the greenfield lot on the existing condominium building at Bell Size, sorry, at Manor and Mount Pleasant. But nobody wants to pay for parking everywhere we're allowed to park on our streets. We already have a problem with parking. The eastward portion of this lot, the one that is ostensibly zoned legal non-conforming, but may very well be zoned residential, would easily accommodate residential development of five lots or accommodate residential development of newly allowed quad situation for home ownership in approximately eight units and two four-plexes. I'm not understanding at all the motivation behind this application. I am a professional real estate developer, a president of the Brandeis Lane Corporation. We have been in business since 1980. I have seen such applications before, where the committee has been faced with a very large number of proposed variances. However, these applications have generally been successful. However, they provide a use of land.
You have less than one minute. Please wrap up.
Yeah, that's fine. These other applications that have been put before the committee are dealing with residential housing, either rental or condominium, provide necessary housing in what is obviously a underserved residential market. So, I am vehemently opposed to any addition to the theatre. I think it is admirable that the proponent wishes to renovate the theatre. I think it is not admirable that the applicant has purchased the properties of the people that were most vehemently objecting to the application. Any developer can do it. I'm very familiar with the process, as you have some line. And this is just, right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, I would like to ask other area residents that please summarize, and also if, don't repeat the same comments, because we have a number of area residents would like to speak. So, the next person is Margaret Thompson. Good evening, Margaret. Good evening.
Margaret, you've been unmuted.
Hi.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear my name.
Yes, good evening. Please state your name and address for our record.
My name is Margaret Thompson. I live at 21 Hadley Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. I am a believer in due process. I'm neither political nor a great public speaker. I appreciate the process of the little man being able to make submissions to the committee and thanks the committee for their patience after such a long day. I'm trusting the committee will not just rubber stamp the request for significant, not minor, variances made by big money, and will listen to the residents of Hadley and Bell Size Roads. I have submitted a letter of all of my concerns regarding the variances requested. I will summarize these, and I have objections to all except variance number one. In the zoning of the block of Mount Pleasant between Bell Size and Manor Road and the east side in 2013, the City of Toronto separated commercial, Mount Pleasant, and residential, Hadley Road, by a laneway that runs east of and parallel to Mount Pleasant. The Regent Theatre intersected the laneway for that one property. The zoning officials erred by not drawing the zoning line around the theatre, but through it. Based on this error, the applicant is abusing the Committee of Adjustment, claiming that the Hadley Road lot had been used with the ethical purposes of the class, and therefore should be grandfathered to allow continued use of the back lot as a theatre. Any future proposed use of a lot of the applicants with a proposed addition is not associated with force of court purchases, a loading dock, et cetera. Post addition to the back of lot facing Mount Hadley Road exceeds residential zoning bylaws to significant excess. I've heard a proposal is for a 16-meter building that will be three stories high, but in fact is at least six meters higher than any other structure that exists on Hadley Road at this time. The average height of our homes are well below 10 meters. The surface area of the building will be greater than four times that allowed by any residential building. These excessive dimensions will compromise the character of Hadley Road. This addition will shadow these properties in the immediate vicinity, cutting out light and gardens for privacy. The applicants should not, did not provide a shadow study. Large windows and outdoor staircases on Hadley Road proposed expansion will provide direct views into our backyards, our front yards, and our bedrooms. There is no need for this building to be 16 meters high on the residential side as compared to one the commercial side. The huge building with excessive capacity will bring significant automobile traffic to the street. The safety of our children, our elders, will be compromised. Imagine the number of patrons, plus staff, plus performers, plus delivery vehicles attempting to jostle for parking spaces, and are backed onto a narrow loading bay designed to be reached by making an abrupt 90-degree turn off a narrow street backing onto a bay. A daycare sits right at the end of our street, maybe 20 meters away. Children run up and down the street to the daycare in face versa all the time. Children ride their scooters and their bicycles up and down the sidewalks. What if one of them slips into ongoing traffic? The street has seniors who use mobility devices. Someone is bound to be hit. Cars are parked on both sides at all times. Cars block our driveways all the time. I'm just running into Mount Pleasant to pick up something. Although it's a very narrow street, we have only 11 to 14 blocks on one side of parking space. Again, such surface area variance requests and large capacity is legitimate services not for the theatre. A huge addition on the Hadley Road side will require that five trees that currently in the city property must be taken down.
Excuse me, you have less than one minute. Please wrap up.
Proposed variances provide literally for no soft landing or green space for the trees to be replaced. And the city regulations state that three trees must be replaced for every tree taken down. As it is, the theatre owners have proved neighboring trees so significantly that they will not survive. And as of yesterday, dug up the roots of the city to increase to install electric for the trees. I have heard multiple requests by the City Planning Committee for residential buildings to the trees' height variances back to 10 meters. I find it interesting that the same was not recommended by the residential side for this part, the Hadley Road residential side. I urge you to consider the characteristics of the street and the purpose of the residential zone so as not to keep Hadley and Bell Size races, so as to keep them as residential. Please vote no to the request of significant variances so that our children and elders are safe, our homes are private, and our safe room areas. The city is in need of more housing, much bigger space.
Thank you very much. You wish your five minutes. Thanks a lot. So, the next person who'll register on the list is Austin Pinto. I also would like to ask other area residents, when they are addressing their concerns, it will be beneficial if they also refer to the variance in which they oppose. I mean, we have 13 variances for this application. If you just mention by numbers which variance are you opposing, that will be also very helpful. And also, please, don't repeat the same comment. So, the next person is Austin Pinto. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for our record.
Austin Pinto, 40 Hadley Road.
Thank you very much. You have five minutes.
Perspective members of this committee, I am the father of Simon Pinto, who is a 20-year-old and has autism. We used to live on 136 Bell Size Drive when Simon was born, and noticed that there was limited he could do inside the house. However, loved to be outdoors. We noticed there was too much fast-moving traffic on Bell Size, and we tried to make a plea to the councillor, Mr. Walker, for speed bumps, and was not given a warm reception to this idea. In 2007, we moved to Hadley Road. It being a short street, north-south has given us some comfort that Simon is safe outdoors. Subsequent to our move, it appeared the city changed its position on speed bumps, and now there are speed bumps on all streets running east-west. However, it was too late for us. Being a small street, Simon knows all the neighbours. He has confidence to move about freely. He is unable to cross Mount Pleasant without supervision. But as long as he stays east of Mount Pleasant, he is safe, and he knows that. On occasions, Simon will move people's junkyards, shovel their stone, and the neighbours are kind enough to give him some money. He happily goes to the convenience stores and buys a drink for himself. Simon uses the services of Envy Central and Proview, so we are very conveniently located in this location. The proposed idea to expand Regent all the way to Hadley Road is hence going to change the entire dynamics of the street. Based on how this was explained at the presentation on the Manor Road, we are certain beyond any doubt that Hadley Road will transform from a quiet and safe street to a commercial street. The loading dock appears to be on Hadley Road. Connected to my son's disability, I also rely on rest workers who come to help with Simon. Unless you are familiar with the situation, it is hard to explain how difficult it is to find these workers. Each and everyone has to travel quite a distance, and they always have a hard time parking. Eventually, somebody or the other gets a ticket, and then they never come again. It's hard to explain these things unless you are yourself suffering from disability or have somebody in your immediate family. We are not opposed to art in any form, and welcome that in the neighbourhood. As long as the coming and going to the existing space without any change to the residential zone, we would support the whole proposal. I'm also a strong advocate for active mode of transportation. I either ride my bike or take the subway to work, and my wife only walks. However, if I'm going to the theatre, I do not ride my bike. Even if 50% of the patrons choose to chose active mode of transportation, I am not exactly sure where the others will park. I'm made to believe that some of the homes in the immediate vicinity have been purchased by developers. While most people have the ability to just move, such options do not exist when you have a person who is disabled and you have built a community around them. I therefore ask the committee to be compassionate in rendering a verdict. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person who'll register is Paul Colra. Good evening.
Madam Chair, I do not see Paul on the call, and I've attempted to contact him.
Okay, then we go to the next person is Blair Wilson. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Blair Wilson. I live at 27 Hadley Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak on two fronts. First of all, I'd like to request a deferral of this process. And then, secondly, I will do specific objections from a letter that I filed on May 16. First of all, I'd like to request a deferral, and there are two reasons for it. Number one, we really haven't been properly notified about a hearing for the law in question. The public hearing notice that we received in the mail, May 12, 2023, makes reference to Plan 1787, PT Lots 10 and 11. Now, these are the two most westerly lots on the property. The lots, the 10 and 11, face Mount Pleasant, and they're already built on CRSS two, commercial residential. The applicant has requested no fewer than 13 variances to the zoning bylaws, but these are on a different lot entirely. The architectural plan that was provided notes that the lot in question for those variances is actually number 52, and that's not even mentioned in the notice. So, I don't know if that's a technicality or a typo or what's going on, but at this point, we've not been properly notified of this process. Secondly, time. Because a small group of us have had to scramble to prepare to speak today, it's due to the fact that a number of previously registered speakers are now subject to NDA agreements because their houses have been purchased. So, things are moving along awfully quickly, and we would like to request a deferral. Now, regardless, I'd like to speak to objections to the requested variances to the zoning bylaw. I would like to submit to the fact that we're not against development. We're not against improvement, and we're certainly not against the theatre. We like all three of those things. But what does concern us is the sheer size and scope of the proposed structure going onto this footprint. To suggest that this is a small addition or minor variances to what is already on this property is, I think, it's a mischaracterization of what they're suggesting. Ultimately, it looks like a big golf dome going on top of a parking lot that used to be there. With respect to specific variances, I'm not going to go through them in too much detail because Margaret already highlighted them, but I would like to highlight the variance numbers just for Madam Speaker. The one about the height, that is variance number four. That's the one that asked for 16 meters height versus 10 meters. That's 60% higher than what is allowed by the bylaw. That hardly seems minor. And the second one she, another one she talked about was variance number nine, and that was for permission to allow the internal door to be four times the size of what is allowed. The other variances that I would like to talk to are... The other variances that I would like to talk to are number five. And this is a proposal that asks for floor space, a floor space index of two times the area of the lot. And that's more than three times the permitted maximum by the bylaw in this case. Hardly suggests that that is, that's minor in nature. Secondly, I would like to talk to variance number eight. Proposal asks to materially reduce the rear yard setback. This is the setback to the residential street. They want to reduce it from seven point five meters to five point seven meters. We'd ask that that variance be considered non-minor and note that it does change the character of the residential neighborhood. It's not in the general interest of the city zoning code. And finally, I would look at number ten. And this is a proposal that asks early from the bylaw that states that every building on the lot may not penetrate a forty-five degree angular plane over a shallow lot along the entire rear yard setback. And since the proposed structure would penetrate the forty-five degree angular plane, that obviously should be viewed, in our opinion, as, as non-minor. We don't, we believe that the magnitude of the majority of the requested variances are not minor. We suggest that the, the proposal as it stands would not be desirable for the appropriate development and use of the land.
Please wrap up.
And seeing as the, the law upon which the proposal wishes to add such a large structure is known as residential, it stands to reason that the general intent and the purpose of the city zoning code would not be maintained. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. So now I would like to invite back the agent to address their concerns.
Very well. Thank you, Madam.
Can I ask the agent a question, please?
Yes.
Or the representative?
Yes.
Mr. Bronskill, are you there?
I am here.
Mr. Bronskill, it's Simon. Can I ask Mr. Bronskill if this, is this an application for an expansion of illegal non-conforming use?
The, the application technically is expanding illegal non-conforming use. And it is legal non-conforming. The variances, I think, and this is the question you're getting at. The requested variances are specific variances to provisions in the bylaw.
What, what I have a concern about is that if this is an application under forty-five two A, one or two, it needs to be put on a public notice that permission for expansion of illegal non-conforming use beyond the public notice. Otherwise, this permission will not be granted when you go to pull a building permit if it's approved.
We only, we've reviewed this with the zoning examiner. The variances from the zoning examiner that are required are included in the notice.
So if you go forward with this, you realize that the permission for illegal non-conforming use will not have been granted by committee because it does not appear on the public notice.
No, but the, through, through you, Madam Chair, we don't need permission from the committee for the legal non-conforming use. That has been determined to exist on the site by the zoning examiner. So there's no variance listed, for example, for use anywhere in the variances. They're all performance standard variances. So, so the use is permitted. That use is being expanded to enable that use to be expanded. There are performance standards under the zoning bylaw that are being varied according to the zoning examiner's notice.
Okay, so you're verifying that you do not require a permission under forty-five two A one for committee to grant an expansion to illegal non-conforming use.
My, my understanding, and Mr. Nichol, you can weigh in. We've talked to the zoning examiner about this. The use is permitted.
That, that is correct. The city zoning examiner has confirmed that this is a lawful legal use and it is a nominal expansion of that legal non-conforming use.
Sorry, it is, it is an expansion of illegal non-conforming.
Has stated. It, it is, it is the performance standards that are being varied and legalization of the existing structure.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I'm looking at the zoning review and I don't know if you use the zoning review. But the zoning examiner has identified that this is an expansion of illegal non-conforming use. An approval from the COA is required under forty-five two A one. But that permission is not stated on the public notice. Again, if you're not seeking permission for expansion of illegal non-conforming use, you can go forward. But what I'm cautioning you is if there is in any way, shape or form a request for an expansion of illegal non-conforming use, that permission of committee is not on that public notice. It would, it would be identified separately on a public notice. And the approval would be under a different section of the Planning Act. It'd be under forty-five two A one. That's all I'm saying. If you're comfortable with going forward with just the variances and no requests for an expansion of illegal non-conforming use, then the public notice looks fine. If you want to take a minute to look at the zoning review, we can grant that if you're comfortable. Or if you came on a waiver, that I'm not sure.
No, we have the zoning review in front of us and I'm just trying to understand.
It is item six on the zoning.
That's correct. That, that's correct. If you are suggesting that it is a staff noticed error that we're describing right now in regards to the posting.
If you'd like, we can, if you're okay with it, we can put the zoning review up on the, on the screen. So maybe Mr. Bronskill can take a look at it.
Absolutely. That is, that is there.
Okay, thank you very much. Just give staff a second. It's up on the screen now and it's item number six.
Yes. So therefore we need to repost. Is that, is that the resolved here?
If you came in under that, if you required permission from COA as that notice says, then the public notice is not correct. The public notice would have to indicate that also a permission under forty-five is required. And then if approved, there would be a separate section in a document that says the permission is approved as well. If Mr. Bronskill wants to comment on it.
Madam Chair, I was not involved with committee staff in terms of the preparation of the notice. So I'm reviewing this zoning review against the public notice. I'm not sure why committee of adjustments staff would not have included this if it was required. I think to fair, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a suggestion to fairly answer the question rather than debating this in front of you. I'm wondering if we could stand down just for the next item so that Mr. Nichol and I could converse and get instructions from the client based on the discrepancy between the notice that would have gone out, the potential discrepancy between the notice that would have gone out and the zoning review notice.
Yes, we can do that.
Be acceptable, Madam Chair?
Yes, it will be acceptable. So we will, we will move on to the next item and you have enough time to, to just discuss further.
My apologies to the panel.
No problem. So we will now go into item number thirty-four. Thirty-four. Number thirty-four. The address is twelve Roy Crest Avenue. And the agent who submit to talk is Manuel Guellen. Good evening. Item thirty-four. Good evening. Please state your name and address for our record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Manuel Guien from thirty Bertrand Avenue.
Thank you. So panel member, we, there is no one who registered to speak to this. Do you want a presentation? We are, we are now at item thirty-four, twelve Roy Crest Avenue. Panel member, do you require any presentation? No. Do you have any question? Mr. Guellen, do you have anything to add to, before we go to committee?
No, Madam Chair, I believe that this is a straightforward application. We have no objections from planning or from TRCA. So I'll defer this to you in terms of approving it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kidd, you had a question earlier. No, you, you move your hand. No, so sorry for that. So if there is no, no other question, can I get a motion? Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that there are no department comments or concerns and that the Toronto Region Conservation Authority has no objection, I would move approval of this application without condition.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Ron to approve this application with no condition, seconded by Mr. Kidd, all in favor. So this application approved with no condition.
Thank you.
So now we are, we are going to item thirty-five so that the, thirty-five, so we can give more time for item thirty-three. So this, item thirty-five is nineteen Glenelia Avenue. And the agent for this item is Ms. Nushin Mazafary. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Nushin Mazafary from High Fennel Studio, representing my client owner of Glenelia.
Would you please state your address as well for our record?
Yes, my name is Nushin Mazafary from High Fennel Studio.
Address, please.
Sorry, I, I thought the committee on my address said it's nineteen zero one Avenue Road.
Sorry, what? Zero?
Nineteen zero one Avenue Road.
Nineteen zero one Avenue Road. Thank you very much. So there is no one, we, there is no one who would like to speak to this application. We have some transportation letters. Do you want to do a presentation or you have any comment? Hello?
Are you asking me if I want a presentation?
No, I've just, I just mentioned that we have some transportation memos. And would you like to add anything? There is no one who would like to speak to this application. Would you like to add?
No, we are absolutely okay with the transportation conditions and we already have submitted the site plan to the committee putting the same conditions and notes that the transportation has requested.
Thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any question from Ms. Mazafary? No question. So if there is no question, would you please put forward a motion, Mr. Kidd? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I feel the requested variances are minor in nature and appropriate. I want to put forward a motion to accept the application. And I'd like to make it subject to forestry conditions and also to transportation conditions that the applicant revise the site plan to A identify the dimension and portion of the existing driveway that are no longer required and will be closed and restored with soft landscaping and full concrete curbs. And secondly, to include the following notation on the site plan. The owner will be required to obtain all permits from the permits and enforcement unit transportation services prior to construction of the proposed development, proposed dwelling. It's my motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Kidd and also subjected to the condition to, of the transportation and also a forestry condition. That's number thirty-six, condition one and two. Do I have a second for this motion? Mr. Hunt seconded, all in favor. Yes, this motion pass. Your application approved with those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we will now go to item thirty-six. Item thirty-six, number nine, Tarrington Crescent or Court, sorry, number nine, Tarrington Court. And the agent who registered on this application is Mehron Heydari. And also we have an area resident who would like to speak. Good evening. Mr. Heydari.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Member of the county, my name is Mehron Heydari from KMP Design Group. One zero nine zero Downey Road, unit four four six.
Thank you. We have one area resident who registered, actually two area residents who registered to speak. Please provide us a brief presentation.
Yeah, this application is the variance that we had before on the hearing on the July seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And we defer this application for communication with the neighbors and get the neighbors' comments. And during this period of time, the client approached the neighbors and talked with them and also I met number ten, this is Michelle from my office. And we talked about the variance that we had. And what we had conversation in the number ten. So she had concern about number seven, about the height of the old bylaw that I explained to her that this bylaw, this variance is not valid anymore. And we don't have this variance anymore. And now I have a request to committee to remove the variance number seven, the old bylaw height.
So variance number seven eliminated?
And also on the meeting that we had, she didn't mention anything, the variance number four on the balcony on the second floor at his result of using the space at the top of the court. But as I talk with my client, he is okay to remove variance number four as well.
So are you removing variance number four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And also her concern about the side of the setback that I explained to her that this is not whole building. And if you look at the site plan that I submitted last week, just this small red portion, it's a setback request for that portion that is very minor. And it's not something that should be worried about the neighbors, the trees on the property line. And I also explained to the neighbors that Michelle, that the client agreed to compensate any damage for the trees on the property during the excavation because this one is not affecting. because this one is not, uh, affecting the trees based on my knowledge and experience. And I don't want to take account of, I just like time more than this. And I will answer any question after the neighbors, uh, talked in the hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we call the, um, the area resident, Michelle Soon Shiong and Bruce Tatters. Good evening. Or Tatters. Good evening, please state your name and address for our record.
Good evening, it's Bruce Tatters and Michelle Soon Shiong, number 10 Tarrington Court. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can clearly hear you.
Perfect. Um, just to be clear, um, we mentioned a, uh, about a couple of the variances that we had issues with. Um, one of them definitely was the overall height. So just to clarify for our purposes, is he withdrawing variance number seven? And he's going to build at a maximum permitted height at 8.8 meters? Because it's not clear here. Because it's been resubmitted for the same variance versus last year.
So, uh, Mr. Haydarri removed, eliminate variance number seven.
Okay, so just for my clarification, I apologize, I'm not a, I'm not a builder.
No, you, you please proceed and, and he can, he can, uh, explain at the end of your presentation. Or submission.
Okay, um, so we're, we're the next door neighbors. We have an overall concern that aside from our house, the entire street is a bunch of bungalows. And we were worried with the sheer number and scale of the variances that were asked for. We're, we're an eight-year-old two-story house built back in 2015 and we didn't apply for a single variance. We got a lovely big home, which is already oversized towards the street. And we're about 4,600 square feet above grade. He's requesting 5,700 square feet. And he's requesting seven separate variances. I'm, I'm pleased that he's willing to drop the height one because there is no reason for him to have a floor plan that had an 11-foot main floor and 11-foot second floor in it. I am very concerned about the side setback variances that he's requesting, rather than the 1.8 meters, it's an access issue. I, I believe their intention is to sell this home once it's bought. But people who buy it are going to have trouble accessing the backyard. I realize it's not the entire house. But there's a, there's a pinch point, uh, right near a, a, a lot line instead of, uh, about a foot and a half wide cedars that run down the lot line for privacy for both properties. And he's only asking for a fair, a four-foot edge between the lot line and his, and the wall of his house. And if you look at the three-dimensional plan, you'll see that that corner is full of windows looking right into that, that cedar hedge. So we just think, we just think it's too close to the lot line. We built, we built with a 1.8 meter setback and we built a big, beautiful two, two-story home. And we don't know why he can't do the same.
Okay.
5,700 square foot above grade is a very big house for the street. I submitted a bunch of Google Maps, street view levels. Uh, I sent them to Sam earlier today. I apologize, it came in late to show you what the streetscape of the street is. And if you guys take a look on Google Maps or with the Sam, pictures I presented with Sam, you'll see that our house, which was not built with a single variance, it's all built within code, looks like a big house on that street. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll ask, um, the agent to come and, um, provide you explanation. Oh, before, before you go, a panel member, do you have any question for this area resident? No question, thank you. So Mr. Haydarri, would you please, um, address the concern of the neighbor?
Uh, sure, I, I think you mentioned there is two neighbors, one to talk.
There are two names and one address.
Oh, okay, okay, I see. Thank you. Yeah, uh, as I explained, you know, I designed this house based on the condition of the property. If you look at the site plan, it's a pie-shaped property. And the setback that we are requesting is 1.31, the one corner of the property, one corner of the building. Uh, and also this inside of the property is not belongs to the neighbors' property for blocking the passage for. And also we have a 1.8 meter setback in the other side. Uh, and the building, if you look at the building on the rear, we have 6.56 meter setback at the end of the building on the east side and 6.27 meter setback from the west side. Which means we also, uh, what we have here is, uh, including the condition of the existing house. And what I designed here is with the respect of the two tree in the rear backyard. If you look at the backyard, we have two, uh, big trees over there. For preserving those trees, I prepared, uh, the house, all setback from the side property line. And this design is completely matched with the area. And as I explained, uh, the setback request is just a small portion and the rest of the house, uh, it's more than the bylaw. And also about the side of the house that the neighbor is concerned. So if you see, we don't have the variance for the lot coverage or anything that exceeding the house size, about the height, about the length. The length that we requesting is because of the, the way of the calculation. And we don't have the physical lengths more than the bylaw. And what we have here is just a one-story addition in the back of the house and we don't have this one on the second floor. And, uh, also, uh, what I want to mention to this application, uh, that for me, it's not very important to remove the side of setback for neighbors' concern because it's a small portion and it's not something that affecting or negative impact for the neighbors' house or property.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel member, do you have any question from the a, agent? Yes, Mr. Kidd, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, again, can I just get the applicant to, um, go through the revision? Uh, uh, I have that he wants to delete, uh, variance number four and number seven. Is there anything in addition to that that I, I missed because of the, um, the, the poor audio on this?
No, yeah, thank you. So the balcony at the second floor on the variance, it's just a floor at top of the porch. And those portion, uh, is not accessible from inside. So in this case, we don't have the balcony over there and we can remove the variance number four for the neighbor's satisfaction.
You're eliminating variance number two as well?
No, 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 number four, number four.
Are you deleting variance number seven?
Number seven as well because the bylaw changed and we don't have the height variance anymore. And we received new zoning bylaw from the examiner that, uh, remove that variance on the application as well.
So you're deleting variance number four and number seven. Are there any other changes that you're making to the application?
Uh, no, there is no other changes. And, uh, to the all variants that we have, for example, variance number five, if you see, it's just a two-step landscaping step bit. So it's not a major thing, yeah.
Any other question?
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't know if you can hear any clearer than I can. Are there any other changes to this application other than the elimination of, uh, variance four and seven?
As far as I've heard, there is only variance number four and seven that have been deleted, eliminated. The rest will remain unchanged.
And also we don't have any staff report. I talked with the staff during this process. And also I'm okay with the transportation recommendation to, uh, to remove the, any other access to the property as it is, yeah.
Did you hear, Mr. Kidd, did you hear it clearly? So the applicant also men, mentioned that he is okay with, he is, uh, he is accepting the, the condition of the transportation. Um, it's a date, the letter is dated May 15th. So he's okay with that condition. And also, um, mentioned that he did not receive any staff report and he is only eliminating variance number four and seven.
Very good, thank you. I'm, I'm ready for a motion if, uh, if I may.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I'd like, uh, I, I feel that the, uh, the application as it's revised, um, uh, is minor in nature and meets the four tests. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application. Uh, amended it to delete variance number four and, and variance number seven. And I would like to make it, uh, subject to, uh, transportation, uh, condition that's set out in the Transportation Services Report dated May 15th.
Thank you, we have a motion from Mr. Kidd to approve this application with some conditions. Yes?
I, I'm prepared to second it, but a friendly amendment, uh, that we add, uh, urban forestry condition. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, yes, uh, urban forestry, uh, condition.
Okay, and Mr. Ron seconded with that friendly amendment, adding the forestry condition, all in favor. So this application approved with those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you so much and have a good evening.
So. It's good. So we will go to item number 37. And, uh, the address is 738 Ballyall Street. 738 Ballyall Street, item 37. So the agent, um, that have been registered is Elisa Jansen and Sabrina Miller. And also the homeowner is Frank Salmon. So, um, good evening. Please state your name and address for the record. And you have five minute, the owner and the applicant, um, and the agent together.
Okay, um, I, I will try to keep it brief. I know it's been a long day for you. Um, name, Elisa Jansen, uh, from T Smith Engineering. Uh, address, 707 Kipling Avenue. And I believe the owner is on as well. So I will just give a brief introduction to the project and I will pass the floor to the owner. Um, we are assisting the owner with legalizing the garage, which was built without the benefit of a permit. So we're retroactively helping to get the permit for this garage. The garage was built slightly oversized and slightly over height. So we're requesting, uh, variances for the footprint and the height. The height especially, you know, this is such a small variance. It's basically just a construction tolerance. Um, we feel these variances are quite minor. The third variance is for the landscaping. Uh, this is an existing condition that the homeowner has had there for nine years. None of the neighbors have ever objected to it. So the homeowner's wish is to, uh, simply legalize the landscaping as well and not have to change it. Um, and that is it for me.
Yes, excuse me, sorry. You've been cut off.
Uh, where did, was I cut off?
No, I mean, is that, is that all your comment?
That, that is, that is all I have to say. I'm, I'm open if you have any questions, but I, I believe the homeowner would like to speak as well. So I'm going to pass to the homeowner.
Okay, thank you very much. Frank Salmon, good evening.
Hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for our record.
Frank, please refrain from unmuting yourself. Staff will unmute you in order for you to speak. Thank you.
Oh, sorry about that. I wasn't, wasn't sure how this worked. Uh, my name is Frank Salmon, I'm the owner at 738 Bell Oil Street. Um, I don't have a lot to add except perhaps to comment on what Elisa said.
Please, sorry. Oh, you did.
738 Bell Oil Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Um, I just wanted to comment on, um, a few things in regards to the backyard. Um, I've been in the house for, uh, approximately seven years now. The backyard has been, um, uh, in its current state for over nine years. Uh, it is not, the, the backyard is not laid on concrete. It's laid on a very soft base. Um, and, you know, neither of my neighbors have any complaints. I can produce letters from them that will state that we have no drainage issues. They have no issues with, uh, the state of the backyard. We've never had drainage issues. God knows that I don't want drainage issues in my own backyard. And I would prefer that it just be left the way it is, given it's been in this current state for over nine years. Um, and is, is, you know, causing no harm to anything. There's lots of greenery in my backyard. There's trees down each side of my fence. You know, so, I mean, that's basically all I wanted to say is kind of give you a little bit of an outline on the state of the backyard and how long it's been in the, the current state.
Thank you very much. So I just have a quick question. Um, how many years this garage has already built? The structure?
Yeah, Frank, if you.
Yeah, I would say, I don't have the exact, um, date, but I, I'm led to believe from my neighbors, because it's a garage that is shared with my neighbor, that it's been, um, there for over 10 years.
Thank you very much. So panel members, do you have any question from the applicant and agent? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To the homeowner, you indicated you've lived there for seven years.
That's correct.
What has been the delay in, uh, applying for legalization of this garage?
Well, it's funny, uh, my neighbor recently saw, the garage is a double garage that is shared with my neighbor. My neighbor over the last two or three years, um, has done some renovations to their house. And upon doing those renovations, um, and getting permits and, uh, different applications process, uh, they became aware that their garage was perhaps not up to code entirely. So because our garages are joined, this, um, became an issue for me as well. They have since, um, finished all their, uh, renovations and they have had their permit approved without making any, um, amendments to the existing garage.
Okay, so in, in other words, the, uh, there are no, uh, quote-unquote, code violations with respect to the existing garage?
Elisa, could you comment on that? I don't believe so, but.
Um, as part of our, um, assisting with legalizing the garage will be to determine an upgrade as required. Uh, but as of now, the first thing that we need to correct is the fact that it isn't zoning compliance, therefore a permit won't be granted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hunt?
No, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Yes, please.
Yes, based on, uh, the information provided by the owners and the fact that this garage, uh, has been in place well before their occupancy of the home, I would move that, uh, we approve this application with no conditions. Just a moment. Yes, with no conditions.
Thank you, we have a motion from Mr. Hunt, uh, seconded by Mr. Kidd, all in favor. Yes, this application approved with. Yes, this application approved with no condition. So now we were going to the application which have been held, it's application number 33. 551 Mon Pleasant Road. Good evening, Mr. Waldemir and David Bronskill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Mr. Bronskill, thank you for that indulgence from the committee. It did enable us to have a conversation, but also include our client in the conversation, so that was much appreciated. I am appreciative for that indulgence. And I also want to thank Mr. Lamb for raising the issue with us. Madam Chair, as I noted in my initial comment to you, I had not been involved in the preparation of the public hearing notice. We did look at some of the historic zoning notices, and this item six that's on the notice had not been on those notices. It is on this notice, and it does note a reference, as Mr. Lamb noted, to subsection 45.2A I of the Planning Act, which is, this committee knows very well, is the provision related to expansions of legal non-conforming uses. And I have worked on files where we've had both variances under 45.1 and this expansion of illegal non-conforming use under 45.2A I on the same notice. I'm not sure it's required, but I also don't decide on building permits. I always joke that the building department, they're the gospel when it comes to that. My opinion doesn't really matter when it comes to getting a building permit. Given that it's on the notice, Madam Chair, and given that we can't figure out why it's not on, the zoning notice, sorry, Madam Chair, and given that we can't figure out why it's not on the public hearing notice, and the risk of not being able to get a building permit, we are going to ask if the committee would be prepared to defer. My one request, Madam Chair, for the committee's deliberations is, given that there is some type of transcription error from the zoning notice to the public hearing notice, I would ask that it not be adjourned, signed, or die. And with Mr. Lamb's help, I'm wondering when the next mail-out might be. I know the next meetings that might be possible would be June 22nd and July 13th. If there's any potential to get this back to one of those meetings, given the error, we would be extremely appreciative. I am cognizant that a mailing would have to go out, and staff obviously have deadlines for that, so I don't want to impose too much on committee staff, but if that's possible, it would be appreciated.
Okay, I can ask Mr. Simon Lamb to see if he can.
Through you, Madam Chair, I do understand the agents and owners' concern. And it is a staff error that it's not on the public notice. I can't give you a timeline right now. I don't have the paperwork in front of me in terms of the availability of next available agenda, but I can give you this, that I will try my hardest to put it on on the very first available agenda that I can.
Thank you very much. So, panel members?
And sorry, Madam Chair, I apologize. Normally, if this is in person, I would have jumped in. I do appreciate that comment, Madam Chair, and I also just want to be clear. I don't know that it's an error from committee of adjustment staff. We don't know why it's there. I'm not accusing committee staff of that. I've worked with Mr. Lamb a lot. We'll figure out why it's not there, but we'll make sure that the correct notice gets out, and I do appreciate the commitment he gave. I really do.
Okay, thank you very much for the comment. So, yes, Mr. Hunt?
Just a question. Given Mr. Lamb's undertaking and the point he provided, what is the, what is the, how should a deferral be made? Sign, id, or just a deferral?
Through you, Madam Chair, the wording could be the very next available date.
The very next available date. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Hunt, please.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would, based on the multitude of concerns that have been expressed and the indication from the applicant that they would like a deferral, I would so move that this item be deferred to the next available date as determined by staff.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt to defer this application to the next earliest available date. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, do we need to consult the other parties, the other people who spoke to this item originally?
Madam Chair, that's not a bad idea. If I could just confirm with staff if the other callers are still on?
Yes, the other.
That's not a bad idea. Madam Chair, if you're okay with this, why don't we just make sure that all the callers understand that whoever got a notice the first time will get a notice again?
Okay.
And if they had any questions about the deferral.
It's okay. I know the last person who speak, Blair Wilson, also requests deferral, but sure. Let's check with all the neighbors. I'll start from the beginning, the neighbors. Andy Wilson and Janet Wilson, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, we would definitely support a deferral, providing that it gives us time to see what the developer's position is, to react to it, and resubmit anything that we have, because these are developments that are just occurring now. And it occurs to me that they actually need then to start presenting evidence of continued use. And we need to see that and be able to react and respond to it.
Perfect, thank you very much. The next person is David Hirsch, good evening.
Good evening. I would support the deferral of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Margaret Thompson, good evening.
Thank you. I would also support a deferral, as long as it's convenient for those of us who may be on holidays, et cetera.
Thank you very much. The next person is Austin Pinto.
Yes, I would support a deferral, but I would also like, there was many concerns that were addressed with respect to feasibility, study, traffic, and safety. And I am not sure whether there is any point, having the next meeting, if the findings of all those studies are not made public.
We, at this stage, we are all talking about deferral, and I'm sure if the applicant have more time, they can work on other issues. At this stage, we are just dealing with deferral. Are you in favor?
Of course I'm agreeing to the deferral, but the deferral should be done when all the concerns that have been raised today have a sufficient answer that have been made public prior to the deferral meeting.
Okay, so we just, we're just dealing with deferral now? And then the next step, the applicant here already your comment, and they will probably address that later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Paul Carl, Carl Raw, good evening.
Paul was not on the call.
Oh, Carl was applicants. And again, Blair Wilson, good evening.
Yes, good evening. I am in support of a deferral. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Perfect, thank you very much. So we have, we checked with all the neighbors. That was a great point. So, panel members, yes, Mr. Kidd, please.
I'd like to second Mr. Hunt's motion.
So would you please just repeat the motion one more time, because we interrupted. Mr. Hunt?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Based on the comments, the multitude of comments from all of the parties, and at the request of the applicant, I would move that this application be deferred to the next available date after the necessary information is in place.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr. Hunt to defer this application to the next available date, the earliest. Do I have a second? Mr. Kidd seconded, all in favor. Yes, thank you very much. So this application deferred to the next first available date. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members, staff, neighbors.
Thank you very much, and good evening. So now we come to the end of the agenda for today. We would like to get a motion. Is there any other? No, nothing? Okay, we would like to. Everything, okay, perfect. So we would like to get a motion to terminate the session. So motion from Mr. Kidd, seconded by Mr. Hunt, all in favor. So we terminate the meeting at 7:18 PM. Thank you very much. Thanks to all city staff for your hard work, and thank you for the panel members for your excellent work. Good night. Bye.